Buenos dias, buenos dias. Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la legislatura de Guam. Pedimos su paciencia y nuestra tardedad. Estábamos asistiendo tanto al panel privado como al gobierno para empezar. Así que ahora estamos situados aquí y les agradezco todo lo que han estado atendiendo y están atendiendo hoy en la audiencia pública. La audiencia pública de hoy se lleva a cabo por el comité de finanzas y operaciones gubernamentales y se ha llamado a ordenar a esta hora, 09:12, el 9 de junio de 2025. El primer notificación de esta audiencia pública fue distribuida a todos los senadores y medios de comunicación el 2 de junio de 2025, con su segunda notificación distribuida el 5 de junio de 2025. Los noticios de audiencia también fueron disponibles en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam, nuestro calendario legislativo y nuestro puerto de noticia público del gobierno de Guam. Esta mañana el comité escuchará testimonios sobre el artículo 11-38 COR introducido por el senador Sean Gumatauto. Es un acto para amendar 2602A, 2602C, 2602D, 2602E, 26202F, 26202G, 26202H, 2602I y 2602J, todos los artículos 2, capítulo 26, título 11 del código de Guam anotado, relativo a la entrega de relieve financiero a las familias y negocios de Guam en la cara de un costo más alto de vida por restaurar el porcentaje de impuesto de privilegio empresarial a 4%. A esta hora me gustaría saludar a mis colegas que me han acompañado esta mañana. Por supuesto, tenemos a nuestro parlador, el parlador Frank Blas Jr., el senador Sean Gumatauto, el autor del artículo, el senador Jesse Lohan, el senador Sabrina Salas-Montanani, el senador Chris Barnett y el senador Telo Tidigui. Gracias colegas por acompañarme esta mañana para esta audiencia muy importante. Antes de empezar, me gustaría recordar a todos los que estuvieron en la audiencia de las reglas generales de conducta de la legislatura de Guam. Los testigos primero deben reconocerse por primera vez por el presidente antes de hablar y deben claramente decir su nombre completo para los fines de guardia. Las preguntas y testimonios deben estar limitados a la sustancia y naturaleza del artículo y la agenda. Los inferences personales a la característica o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testigo no son permitidos. El presidente de la comisión puede ordenar la desaparición de cualquier miembro de la legislatura de Guam o la audiencia pública que fracasa en observar el decorum proporcional a las reglas de la legislatura de Guam 38. Cualquier violación de esta generación de conducta resultará en la desaparición inmediata del auditorio público. Bien, ahora me gustaría pedirle al autor del artículo 11-38, el senador Sean Gumatauto, que introduzca la legislación que ha propuesto antes de la legislatura.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente, por mantener esta audiencia pública sobre el artículo 11-38 COR y por la oportunidad de hablar sobre la importancia de recuperar la confianza pública por restaurar el porcentaje de impuesto de privilegio empresarial o BPT. Señor presidente, el aumento del porcentaje de BPT de 2018 de 4% a 5% fue al menos el segundo ajuste autorizado por los senadores desde la legislatura de Guam 27 y a pesar de la introducción de varios artículos legislativos destinados a revertir el porcentaje de 4%, en particular en respuesta a la emergencia global de salud pública COVID-19, desde entonces ninguna de esas propuestas fueron adoptadas. En consideración del estado de la economía en 2025 y los negocios de todas las tamañas que están interconectadas, el paso del artículo 11-38 COR es crucial para proporcionar a nuestro país el sector privado con mucho relieve financiero necesito, todos los contribuyentes. Una historia de principios de abril que quería compartir con todos en la sala y con el comité y usted, señor presidente. Un negocio local a la vuelta de aquí estaba celebrando su décimo aniversario cuando en una línea muy larga para apoyar ese negocio, el dueño salió de atrás para agradecerme en advance por apoyarme y comprar uno de sus productos de marca. Entonces me pidió que ayudara a pasar el reto de BPT. Anotó la cantidad de dólar que estaba pagando en BPT, entregando un cheque por esa cantidad en persona cada mes al departamento de ingresos y impuestos de Guam en Baragata y miró hacia la oportunidad de tomar una parte de ese BPT mensual dirigido a impuestos de ingresos para usar procedimientos de un reto de BPT para entrenar a sus empleados y invertir dinero en su oficina. En sus ojos estaba el aspecto de un dueño de negocios luchador, pero sus palabras y su sonrisa reflejaban la esperanza de algo mejor llegando pronto. He oído historias similares con las visitas a mi oficina, las muchas llamadas y correos a mi oficina a lo largo de la calle aquí en Nagatia, en los salones de este gran Congreso de Guam, en mi iglesia en Talafofu, en el campo de fútbol de GFA en Harmon y muchos otros lugares donde he pasado cualquier cantidad de tiempo desde el inicio del año y en eventos públicos de norte a sur. Quisiera que tuviera el tiempo de compartir todo esto, lo que todos estos contribuyentes tenían que decir, todas ellas historias convincentes, calma, paciencia, coraje. Ha sido ese recordatorio para mí de que los negocios no pagan impuestos, la gente paga impuestos. En 2025, Guam se enfrenta a problemas serios que estaban en el proceso de crecimiento. Todos los contribuyentes están tratando de hacer sentido de todas las cosas que han visto y escuchado alrededor de ellos, ya sea desde una publicidad online en la red de prensa, hasta una headline de periódico, hasta una actualización de noticias en la radio local, hasta la historia de la tarde de las 6:00. Todos los contribuyentes están preocupados, ciudadanos que están buscando una ruta clara de recuperación y para ese camino o en este caso una política para ayudar a ver a Guam a través de mejores tiempos. Déjenme trazar hoy un poco más y si puedo pedir a AV a que traiga esta sola diapositiva. Cuando el BPT fue sublevado por la política de esta franja, la GOF Guam vio inmediatamente la pérdida de BPT en 2019 de 2.7 millones, principalmente en las montañas del inicio de la emergencia COVID-19 y no tanto el plan de impuestos de Trump o inversiones en las escuelas públicas o el hospital. Al mismo tiempo, la GOF Guam estaba ejecutando un presupuesto de 959.1 millones, 259.1 millones se gastó en BPT. El turismo alcanzó su máximo de 1.63 millones de visitantes. En 2020, bueno, BPT estaba corto, 17 millones, el mundo y Guam estaban en el centro de una pandemia global. Créditos a los políticos que vieron que las cosas no iban a mejorar, reduciendo el presupuesto fiscal del gobierno de Guam durante un segundo año consecutivo, bajando a 954 millones para la GOF Guam. En 2021, otra pérdida reportada de 13.9 millones en BPT a pesar de la ayuda de coronavirus federal, relief and economic security act and American rescue plan act funds thrown into the Guam economy thanks in large part to US President Joe Biden. Interesantemente, el presupuesto es aprobado por la legislatura de Guam por FY22 a 937 millones, entonces el presupuesto de la GOF Guam más bajo en cinco años, pero luego algo sucede con toda la asistencia federal, incluido la construcción, la construcción que está sucediendo en todas nuestras instalaciones militares y luego Guam ve 33.2 millones de recogida de GRT adoptada justo mientras la pandemia global está llegando a un final. Y esto como políticos luego seguirán a aprobar el mayor presupuesto en la historia del gobierno de Guam a solo más de un millón de dólares. En 2024, la GOF Guam reportará su primer 400 millones en un año en recogidas de BPT, 63.4 millones de ingresos adoptados de BPT, FY2024 y FY2025 presupuestos nuevamente más de un millón de dólares. Gracias, AV, por su ayuda. Esto nos lleva a este momento muy importante. El artículo 11-38 COR reconoce que los llegados turísticos de principales mercados de origen para octubre de 2024 permanecen mucho menos de los niveles previos a la pandemia. De acuerdo a los últimos números de nuestros amigos en el bureau de visitantes de Guam, Guam recibió solo 126.519 visitantes en febrero de 2025 o 55.6% menos en comparación con el mismo mes en febrero de 2019. Durante los primeros cinco meses del año fiscal de 2025, es decir, octubre de 2024 a febrero de 2025, GVB registró solo 301.370 llegadas. Señor presidente, más de un tercio de los negocios de turismo dejaron de emplear a sus empleados y un cuarto de todos los negocios temporalmente o permanentemente detuvieron sus operaciones debido a la pandemia COVID. Esto es de acuerdo a un informe de 2021 de nuestros amigos en la Universidad de Guam. De los negocios encargados, 8% dejaron de emplear, 75% de sus empleados y otro 20% dejaron de emplear, todo su personal en ese momento. No se sabe si alguna parte del trabajo del gobierno de Guam fue dejado o en cualquier momento durante o inmediatamente después de la pandemia COVID. Y luego, a la otra lado, los empleados clasificados por el sector público recibieron una aumento del 22% en 2023. Los aumentos de salarios que eran separados de otros aumentos de salarios aprobados para los maestros, oficiales de seguridad pública y enfermeras añadieron al menos 23 millones al presupuesto anual del gobierno, mientras que los empleados del sector público mantuvieron sus trabajos y se les dio aumentos significativos en un momento en el que nuestra industria de turismo y nuestra industria de servicios estaban luchando por recuperarse. Guam, como una destino de visitantes, continúa deteriorándose con cada día que hemos oído en este auditorio público y a lo largo del camino en el auditorio. El discurso de BPT siempre se revuelve alrededor de las finanzas gubernamentales. ¿Qué hay de las finanzas de nuestra comunidad empresarial? Nuestra dependencia de impuestos de privilegio empresarial era más de una dependencia de nuestros negocios. Esa dependencia llegó con la expansión del gobierno mientras que la turismo y otras industrias estaban luchando por recuperarse. Tres presupuestos fiscales consecutivos de más de un millón de dólares que han afirmado que invierten más en la GOF Guam, francamente parece que está un poco fuera de contacto en este momento en Guam y los eventos que están sucediendo a nuestro alrededor. ¿Has caminado las calles de Tumon en la noche? ¿Nuestros negocios tienen problemas para reclutar y mantener empleados trabajadores duraderos cuando los negocios involucran una agencia del gobierno? ¿Están obteniendo lo que están pagando? Señor presidente, necesitamos revertir el BPT y el 1% se pone de vuelta en los negocios de todo el país, todos los contribuyentes. Give the private sector that support and give them a chance to support our greater economy. La reto propuesta en mi artículo 11-38 es mucho más sencillo que muchos pueden pensar. Las secciones repeleadas de la ley probablemente verán que las flotaciones del sector privado se vuelvan mejor. El artículo 11-38 abrirá la puerta para la formación de habilidades y para los casi 60.000 trabajadores, un objetivo para mejorar la eficiencia y la productividad en la industria privada de Guam. La política que estamos hablando hoy llevará a muchos otros inversiones en nuestro sector empresarial en un momento en el que necesitamos más de ellos. Señor presidente y colegas, el artículo 11-38 como una política refleja un entendimiento de que cuando los negocios continúan luchando y finalmente deciden cerrar la tienda, eso significa menos ingresos para este gobierno. Desafortunadamente, a pesar de recoger más impuestos y pagar más a su trabajo que nunca antes, incluyendo mejores tasas de empleo para la jubilación y contribuciones de seguro médico, el gobierno de Guam necesita la urgencia de priorizar la industria, nuestra recuperación de turismo y las mejoras a la entrega de servicios públicos críticos, atención médica pública, servicios de seguridad pública y educación. ¿Cuál es mi solución para recuperar la confianza pública en nuestra franja coigual de gobierno hoy? Bueno, digo, devolver el punto temporal del 1% en BPT a través del artículo 11, un estimado 85 millones que este gobierno nunca pretendía ni debería continuar recogiendo para la misma gente y las organizaciones que multiplicarán ese dinero y generar mucha actividad económica para todo Guam. Señor presidente, nuestros negocios de todas las tamañas son el motor de la economía de Guam y apoyemos todos nuestros negocios con esta política porque, de nuevo, cuando logran, todos logramos. Cuando los negocios ganan dinero, ¿adivinen qué? Para mejor o para peor, la GOF Guam recoge ese dinero a través de impuestos. Somos todos contribuyentes. De nuevo, déjame decir eso de nuevo, cada uno de ustedes en esta sala y en este panel, todos somos contribuyentes. Todos beneficiamos de la y la reacción del artículo 11-38. Con eso, señor presidente, espero las presentaciones de hoy y trabajar con el comité de finanzas y los interesados relevantes en cualquier amendamiento que pueda ser necesario para mover el artículo 11-38 COR a través del proceso legislativo en los días y las semanas a venir. Gracias de nuevo, señor presidente, por todo lo que hace por el pueblo de Guam.
Señor Gumatauto, señor senador, solo unos pocos puntos que voy a señalar como una declaración de abertura para mí como presidente del oficio de finanzas y presupuestos, dando una vista a lo que actualmente estamos haciendo dentro de esta legislatura de Guam 38. Así que, primero y más, ahora mismo el CRER, que es básicamente un informe mensual de ingresos, los ingresos ajustados para el informe más reciente son 29.4 millones de aproximadamente 52 millones como registrados, pero después de todas las apropiaciones y otras excedencias cometidas por este gobierno, en realidad es baja a 29.4 millones. Como presidente del oficio de finanzas y presupuestos, ha sido mi decisión no escuchar ninguna legislación que es cerca de 50 millones de propuestas antes de esta legislatura simplemente porque no creo que sea responsable hacer que 50 millones corriera 29.4 millones de exceso de ingresos reportados inaudita. Una de las principales razones por las cuales renuncie a escuchar estos artículos, además de ser llamado a sesión de emergencia por nuestro parlador o el gobernador, es porque estos ingresos son inauditos. Ahora estamos desempeñando, desempeñando bajo el gobierno en términos de audiciones de tiempo. Hay muchas razones para eso, sin embargo, yo solo niego a apropiar dinero en un año fiscal actual que no es audito, que no se realiza. Hay razones para eso, pero no enumeraré más allá de eso. Además de eso, muchos de los que están en este panel pueden discutir, al menos brevemente en sus conversaciones con ustedes, estas iniciativas legislativas sobre el desarrollo económico, entre otras, la expansión de los aterrizos y las oportunidades allí, otra propiedad que ha estado en silencio durante décadas dentro de nuestro inventario gubernamental que ahora puede proporcionar oportunidades de leasing para desarrollar negocios y derivar ingresos adicionales que entran en nuestro gobierno. Así que eso es solo un breve informe de su oficio de finanzas y presupuestos y de su legislatura republicana de 38 Guam y otros miembros.
Señor presidente.
Sí.
¿Hay un notificación fiscal de OFB?
Sí, hay, señora. Lo aseguro que se lo proporciona a usted. Gracias y bienvenido, senador Tulahe. He tomado una decisión como presidente y conduciendo esta audiencia hoy para tratar de abordar esto de la manera más equilibrada posible. He contactado como institución premier apoyando el artículo 11-38 en la Cámara de Comercio de Guam y les pedí que prepararan un panel que se sentará junto al gobierno mientras introduzcamos el artículo inicialmente. Llamaré a esos miembros del panel y dejaré a la líder de esos miembros del panel hacer la presentación. Empecaré con el gobierno. Me han pedido por Lester Carlson de la equipo de política fiscal, quien tiene una cita. Puede discutir la razón por la que tendrá que ir pronto si lo desea, pero he pedido al gobierno hacer su presentación primero y luego llamaré al sector privado. Inmediatamente después de eso, voy a divertir a los profesionales médicos, en particular los médicos que han hecho la solicitud para ser escuchada. Creo que es obvio por qué necesitan volver a la clínica y cuidar de nuestra gente y entonces ese será el orden, luego todo el resto que se ha inscrito y el orden que se inscribió. Así que con eso, señor Byrne, ¿señalará el panel del gobierno esta mañana o señor Lester Carlson?
Buenos dias, buenos dias, buenos dias, buenos dias, Guam. Lester Carlson, director del Bureau de Investigación de Manejamiento y presupuesto. A mi derecha, señor Edward Byrne, director del Departamento de Administración. A mi izquierda, señora Maria Lizama, directora del Departamento de Inversión y Impuestos.
Por favor, proceda, señor Carlson y para todos los demás en el panel, muchos de ustedes han experimentado, han venido aquí muchas veces, pero por favor identifique claramente usted mismo para los fines de guardia antes de presentar su testimonio. Lester, usted puede comenzar, director BBMR.
Gracias, señor presidente. Si pudiera, pedir a AV a que levante una breve presentación que preparamos. Este es el testimonio verbal de BBMR, escrito y seguirá en el artículo 11 y les agradezco mucho por la oportunidad de proporcionar testimonio sobre este artículo. Siguiente diapositiva, por favor. La reducción de la creencia de BPT asociada con el artículo 11 sería 81.9 millones predicados en la solicitud ejecutiva presupuestaria del gobernador de FY26 a este organismo. Eso también se traducirá en una reducción de 5.1 millones en el fondo pharmaceutical GMH y una reducción de 1.5 millones en el fondo de la lluvia. La reducción total es 75.3 de dinero general disponible para apropiación para cuidar de necesidades críticas, el hospital siempre siendo uno. Tenemos ahora una situación, con suerte, la DOE sacará algo de sus donaciones. He oído hoy que el superintendente Swanson dijo que estaban en recibo de 9 millones recientemente y eso sirve bien para la reembolsa para los reparaciones de FBLG y GW que estaban contratados, pero sin el dinero ARP para apoyarlos, como este organismo es consciente, podría necesitar apoyo local. Otro tema, pero de nuevo, debemos ser conscientes de las necesidades que este organismo ha presentado durante los últimos meses. La siguiente diapositiva, por favor. Excesos de ingresos por fuente. Los medios informan que esta reducción de 80 millones de dólares en BPT es de exceso de ingresos, lo cual no es el caso. Como dije anteriormente, los 81.9 millones se están tomando la solicitud ejecutiva presupuestaria del gobernador de FY26 y proponen que esa cantidad sea adoptada para FY26. El exceso de ingresos solo no es lo que motiva las recogidas de exceso. BPT no produce en sí mismo los excesos de ingresos que hemos disfrutado durante los últimos años. Siguiente diapositiva, quiero llevar a todos a través de una pequeña lección de historia, por falta de un mejor término, y gracias, senador Gumatauto, por citar el CRER de BBMR. Lo aprecio. Para FY2019, nuestros excesos de ingresos reportados en el CRER de octubre, que comprende la totalidad de fiscal 19, porque el período final es el 30 de septiembre, verán los 22.4 millones de exceso de recogida de ingresos y verán que el driver principal fue el retraso de impuestos que llevó a una potente 17 millones sobre el nivel adoptado y que el BPT ni siquiera golpeó el marcador de ingresos. Hemos destacado estos números para la identificación fácil. De nuevo, BPT no fue la causa de las recogidas de exceso de ingresos. Avance, por favor, AV, a FY2020. Teníamos una recogida de exceso de ingresos de 19.6 millones. De nuevo, el BPT desempeñó bajo, estaba a 17 millones menos del nivel adoptado mientras retrasaba impuestos. De nuevo, fue el driver principal de recoger 23 millones más de lo que fue adoptado, así como nuestros amigos en el mundo corporativo, también casi igualando esa cantidad de 20.8 millones en recogidas sobre el nivel adoptado para FY2020. Siguiente diapositiva, por favor. FY2021, nuestros excesos de recogida de ingresos eran 62 millones. El BPT de nuevo no golpeó el marcador de ingresos, caí 14.4 millones menos del nivel adoptado. Pasando a la parte superior de la página, verán de nuevo retrasos de impuestos, 44.9 millones sobre niveles adoptados, impuestos de ingresos corporativos, 22.8 millones sobre niveles adoptados y impuestos de ingresos individuales a 14.7 millones sobre niveles adoptados. Señor Byrne y yo hemos dicho en muchas ocasiones, el barómetro de nuestra economía es el retraso de impuestos. Cuanto mayor sea la cantidad de retrasos de impuestos, la salud general de la economía puede ser asertada. Como todos sabemos, cuando un negocio empieza a luchar, una de las primeras cosas que no pagan es el retraso de impuestos, pero la remitencia de tiempo y honesta ha sido un hallmark de esta comunidad durante muchos, muchos, muchos años. Siguiente diapositiva, por favor. FY2022. Teníamos una recogida de exceso de ingresos de 103 millones, básicamente es 103.6. Finalmente tenemos BPT en blanco a 34 millones recogidos sobre niveles adoptados, pero la totalidad de las recogidas de impuestos, los impuestos de ingresos para la corporación individual y retraso fue el acumulativo 70 millones sobre niveles adoptados. Retrasos de impuestos de nuevo, 25.9 millones sobre niveles adoptados. Siguiente diapositiva, por favor. Para FY23, teníamos recogidas de exceso de 79.4 millones. El BPT de nuevo este año superó las expectativas en un muy significativo 41.2 millones. Sin embargo, las recogidas de impuestos acumulativas casi igualaron eso, totalizando 39.3 millones. De nuevo, retrasos de impuestos, 24 millones sobre niveles adoptados, con impuestos de ingresos corporativos a 18.8 millones sobre niveles adoptados y los impuestos de ingresos no golpearon el marcador y caían menos de niveles adoptados por 3.5 millones. Siguiente diapositiva, por favor. FY24. Teníamos 149.3 millones recogidos en exceso de niveles adoptados para FY24. El BPT contaba con 64.1 millones, pero nuestros establecimientos en el grupo de impuestos de ingresos acumulativos 77.9 millones, con impuestos de ingresos individuales a 20 millones sobre niveles adoptados, impuestos de ingresos corporativos a 22.1 millones sobre niveles adoptados y retraso de impuestos, el estelar "mantenimiento fuerte", piloto de el grupo de impuestos de ingresos, retrasos de impuestos de 35.4 millones, superando las expectativas. Es abundantemente claro que los esfuerzos acumulativos de la comunidad empresarial y su adhesión stalwart a la remitencia de impuestos adecuada y de tiempo ha fortalecido nuestra economía durante los últimos cinco años. El BPT no es por qué tenemos excesos de recogida de ingresos. También me gustaría hacer una declaración en la siguiente diapositiva, por favor. Informes de cierre de negocios. Aparentemente, Lotte Duty Free fue listado, sin embargo, tenemos información de que eso fue un error y todavía están operativos. Luego hubo algunas referencias a Izakawa de Jimmy, que se relocateó pero no cerró. Luego había un montón de negocios que tenían sitios expandidos que todavía están en funcionamiento pero fueron listados como cierre. La ubicación de la playa de strip es todavía operativa, pero la que tenían el modo de expansión necesitaban retirar. Shop for Less, Biology, Submarina, Circle K, Yogurt Lab, IHOP y Boogs Cafe. Todos esos negocios todavía están en negocios. All of those businesses are still in business, they just downsized. And then there are also businesses that probably closed for a different reason and not their inability to pay BPT. On the converse, we need to be equal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your analogy earlier about representation on the panel. We, we, we do need to make sure that teeter totter isn't teetering or tottering. So we have new businesses. Coco Ichibanya, sorry, Curry House at Don Don Donkey, Village of Donkey, that recently opened up, and I hear that there are lines to be able to get in, so the curry must be good. Visin Co expanded from their location in Ganesh Shopping Center and now have a location at Don Don Donkey. I personally went to the new Happy Mart in Upper Tuman, and that place has to be three times bigger than the one in Baragata, and it probably has three times as many employees. It is, it is really, really nice, really, really nice. And then, of course, we're all watching the new cost lets come up right next to Ganesh Shopping Center. So the activities, I'm not going to even talk about the Village of Donkey. I mean, they're there, they opened, and then we have had successive franchises opening up in either their food, primarily in their food court. So we really need to be cognizant of where we are when we're talking about business and business activity. Next slide, please. The Department of Revenue and Taxation issues, as we're all required to, a citizen-centric report. This slide depicts the number of business licenses from 2020 to the last report that they had available for data, which is FY2023. You can tell from the data that in FY2023, we had thirty-two thousand one hundred and nineteen businesses that renewed their licenses and three thousand and ten new business license applications. The cumulative total is three thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-nine either existing businesses or new business ventures, ventures that were launched with the initial application for a business license. Next slide, please. Employment numbers. This, this slide really needs to be taken to heart and a resounding attaboy to the business community. We know where things are with tourism, but we also know where expansion in retail and construction opportunities lie. And thank God we have astute businesses that jumped all over those opportunities. The time period that we have in the data that is on the slide shows that overall, from calendar year 2020 to 2024, the private sector saw a total increase of employment of eight thousand jobs. Yes, I said that. Eight thousand jobs, a little Eddie Cabo there. The public sector, on the other hand, increased by two hundred and thirty jobs in the same timeframe. If we don't have a whole bunch of people in this audience like sticking out their chest right now and being proud to have contributed to the growth of our economy, providing jobs to whoever needs a job, who has the aptitude and the willingness to put in the blood, sweat, and tears, apparently we have a lot of that need already met. We're never done, but we're getting there, and we're doing a darn good job of it. Next slide, please. Withholding taxes. While I mentioned this in the reciting of the prior fiscal years, withholding taxes, government employment has not jumped significantly. Yes, we got adjustments in our pay, but the primary driver of employment on Guam, if you look at the next, the last slide, we, you know, when you look at the numbers of employees, they're primarily in the public sector, I mean, private sector, sorry. So withholding taxes, FY2020, we collected three hundred and sixty-nine million. FY24, we collected three hundred and nine million, an increase of thirty-nine point four million dollars in one single tax category. Again, the BPT is not the culprit. The BPT is a crucial element, crucial resource in providing government service, and the government service that hasn't ballooned as it should not over these same timeframe. Last slide I have for today is we are all aware of the federal government's missteps and they're trying to find themselves. But one thing has been made abundantly clear, they're looking to cut. They're looking to cut, and they're looking to cut. We have been faced with the same prospect by the same president, and we're here today because of what happened in 2017, and he has promised to do the same thing. Now, I'm sure that that's not a taco statement on the president's behalf. I'm sure he really does want to do that. And we should all be aware of how much he sticks to whatever it is he says initially. But we are going to find out whether or not his promise of corporate tax reduction is going to come to pass and hit us right between the eyes again. Thankfully, we have some really good news. The selection committee for the new Simon Sanchez High School has selected the most qualified bidder to provide that new, better, long-awaited high school. But remember, the authorization calls for sixteen point three million dollars a year during the design and construction period, not just when we take possession of the facility, during the design and construction. So, Mr. Chairman, I need you to pencil in sixteen point three million dollars in your FY26 budget, please. Thank you. Finally, we've talked about this for years, and nobody's taken the initiative. Why, I don't understand, given the amount of internet sales shopping just undergone by my household, my employees' household, Marie's household, I'm sure Edward's household as well, as well as everybody here. Why are we allowing this tax leakage to, to continue to occur? And our good friends behind me, I thought it was like, well, you know, if you taxed it, then maybe it would be incentive, more of an incentive to buy local. Why are we not talking about taking something that is probably bigger than any one of us ever understood? Why aren't we talking about taxing internet sales? We could do the whole five percent. We don't have to do exemptions. We don't have to cut the cookie. What happened to that? For a recap of what I just said, please tune into PDN. The governor has op-ed on this subject that I would encourage everybody to take a look at. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Lester, will your panel members be making any presentations? Senator, Edward Byrne, want to change places?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I feel a new cloak has descended upon me. Mr. Carlson has spoken very eloquently about the income side of this. With your permission, I'd like to address the other side of the equation, the expenditure part of government. Mention was made of government employees and their pay. I think it would be hard to disprove that government employees don't spend their pay with local businesses, other than the point that Mr. Carlson just made about internet sales. But generally, that is where government employees spend their, their salaries, to buy essentials, sometimes to buy non-essentials, but they're, they're spending their, their money, which I think they earn, with local businesses. Likewise, when government buys goods and services, most of the goods and services it buys are from local services. We have a preference for local vendors, and we stick by that preference. I just pulled out a few figures from the fiscal twenty-three audit, and both I and the director of DRT use fiscal twenty-three numbers because they're easy to get hold of. One third of our expenditure, our local expenditure, thirty-one point three percent, is on public education. Sixteen percent is on protection of life and property. Five point six percent go, went to public health, community services. Most of the public health and community services are funded by federal funding. In fiscal twenty-three, we paid sixty-three point two million to GPA, which amounted about seven point two percent of our expenditures, which, again, went right back to support the public and made available free funds for them to, to expend. It's not clear to me that, or how, any significant deduction or reduction in public revenues, which of these programs, which of these important programs it's going to impact. One number that I particularly pulled out is the amount spent on capital projects in fiscal twenty-three, and it was zero. And the reason for that is because we are constantly dealing with deferred maintenance in all our, in DOE, in, in all of our activities. We're trying to catch up with the deferred maintenance, which we couldn't afford in prior years, but thankfully now we are beginning to afford. But that doesn't really bring us further forward. We need new capital expenditure to bolster up our infrastructure, and a reduction in public funding is not going to help that cause. And, and indeed, much of the expenditure on capital projects would go to local businesses. The, the actual makeup of GRT is based upon gross receipts of about eleven billion. We already acknowledge and concede exemptions of a hundred and seventy-five million. There is a considerable reduction, therefore, in BPT receipts before they are even collected. And in addition to that, you can see in the fiscal twenty-three audit that tax abatements, further tax abatements of twelve million were reported. As Mr. Carlson mentioned, the increase originally in the percentage of BPT from four to five percent was a response to the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. It seems, from what I understand, that most of the provisions of that act are to be retained and indeed are to be enhanced. There are a number of provisions, however, to support corporations, no doubt recognizing that corporate, corporate profits bolster the economy. And the largest of those in particular is the bonus depreciation, whereby businesses can immediately write off their capital expenditure in the year they expend it, rather than have to spread it over years. That will, of course, affect our own corporate receipts. So as the governor said, it's a risky business in trying to arbitrarily, without a whole lot of numbers, arbitrarily trying to reduce a major source of our income. It's, it's a tax, it's not a progressive tax acknowledged. It's, it's a fixed rate tax which impacts everybody equally. But it's a tax that is relatively easy to collect, as you can see. Businesses generally pay their tax, their BPT on time, and we can easily collect it, both at DRT and at DOA at Treasure of Guam. Don't take a risk unnecessarily. We have programs to support. The government is ready to promote those programs. We look to you to make sure that there's sufficient funds to, to carry the economy forward and not endanger the economy. And we look forward to further discussion on this in order to make sure that government funds, which are not sacrosanct, but they, they need to be protected in order to promote public welfare. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sidozmasi, Director Byrne, and I want to thank also another colleague of ours who has joined us, Senator Parkinson. This time, are there any other panel members from the government that we're going to be presenting? Please proceed.
Hafidh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Senators Solis Matanani, Luhon, Gumatalta, Speaker Blas, Senator Terlahi, Senator Barnett, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Tarwi. My comments are just going to be really brief, you know, as you saw in Lester's slide, Director Carlson's slide, some of our testimony really is in providing the data for the presentation that he made. I just would like to kind of summarize the governor's article that appeared in today's paper, and just pretty much to stress, you know, nearly ninety percent of Guam's businesses pay three percent or, or less in business privileged taxes. In 2023, businesses claimed three point five billion dollars in tax exemptions. When the nine million in reductions for small businesses is added to the already one hundred and seventy-five million in losses, the amount of tax breaks ends up at a hundred and eighty-four million, and I believe this is included in Lester's slide. The proposed legislation would add at least another eighty million dollars in loss annually. And just, just to close, I, I know that Senator Gumatalta referred to the bloated government. I can assure you that the Department of Revenue and Taxation is certainly not one of those agencies. In fact, our manpower is down to about a hundred and sixty-eight employees. I know that the previous legislative, legislative body also indicated that, you know, we had way too many limited-term employee, employees. So I will say that we have made efforts based on that. So I will say that we have made efforts based on that discussion with the previous body. And we now have a total of sixteen limited-term employees, which really is about ten percent of our total staffing pattern. You know, some of those employees, the LTAs, we really had opportunities to convert them to classified employees. And, you know, of course, they rated for, they went through the process of interviewing, and they were appropriately selected. And so therefore, you know, our agency actually is not one of those. In fact, we are hurting. Our agency has a total of two employees, two full-time employees in the business privileged tax branch. And that currently is supplemented by a couple of full-time employees from other branches. What we've attempted to do, of course, is to cross-train. And as with across the nation and across the island even, you know, we are certainly not immune from the recruitment and retention challenges that everyone else is experiencing. So I just kind of wanted to throw that in there, Senator. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Sidoz Masi, Marie, I just want to make sure for the record, it's not because you're not funded, though. You are funded at proper levels to hire. Please hire. Thank you. So at this time, what I'm going to do is going to turn over to the private sector, and I'll have Ms. Catherine Castro open up. And I know that we're going to excuse Lester Carlson. He has an appointment to attend to. So Lester, thank you for joining us. So what I'm going to do is, Catherine, can you please open? We will go to your panel members after you. But I had made a commitment to doctors to have their testimony on the record. So as soon as you're finished, I'm going to have Dr. Wen come forward and have his testimony, and I believe we have a Zoom from Dr. Shea. So please, you know, forgive the committee for proceeding this way. I think we can all understand why we're doing that. Also, Senator Lohan has been very gracious to me. He gave me the entire afternoon. So in the event that we need to recess, we can recess this hearing around lunchtime. And everyone who wasn't able to testify can come back, if they're able to, in the afternoon to testify. So we have the whole day for this hearing. Thank you, Senator Lohan. Catherine Castro, please proceed.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Catherine Castro, and I'm with the Guam Chamber of Commerce. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. And may I say that I thought that there would be more senators here today? And it's quite disappointing, for the record, that we don't have all senators here because this is really an important issue for the business community. And I do have prepared statements, and you all have it. And I also have a petition that's, I don't know, several pages long and has over almost a thousand signatures from the community at large, including small businesses and businesses at large. But I, you know, I was here, and I was going to read my prepared testimonies. And I can't. I can't read my prepared testimonies because I have to address Mr. Lester Carlson. Okay, can I just say that the withholding increases, I think that that's fantastic. It's great because when you roll back the BPT, guess what? These folks are going to have more to spend in their pockets, more increases in our employees' pay so that those increases, so that those withholding taxes can increase. Okay? So that's great. Thank you very much for, you know, kind of letting us know that that is the primary source of our collection for taxes, including the corporate taxes. And may I also say that you have a fantastic business community. This business community is one of the most giving business communities ever. I have had so many people in the chamber world that said, "I wish that our businesses were like Guam businesses," because they are just so giving. Not only do they do their due diligence in paying taxes, but they give back to the community in so many ways. And I'm not going to go into that right now. Also, in reference to increase of eight thousand employees, I do believe that we do have a construction boom going on. And so I understand that we have, just for this particular military buildup that is happening presently, we have over five thousand H2 workers, if I'm not mistaken, even more. So perhaps that would be the job increases that, you know, we're taking a look at here. Those, all of these increases in the employment of folks, that could be, you know, associated with these, the construction, the military construction that is happening. And thank God for the Department of Defense investment here. And may I also say that the internet sales tax, that's something that the chamber has never given up on. The chamber continues to push for that. We would love to see a sales tax because then that way, the community sees what they're actually paying for. Right? But today, we're talking about the BPT. And I'm thinking that, you know, we've got a whole bunch of businesses here. We've got Dr. Wen, a whole bunch of businesses here. I'm going to defer the rest of my time to them because you need to hear their stories. You need to hear their challenges. They're the ones that have lifted this government up for so long. And why is it the private sector's responsibility to hold up and have a status quo on one point four billion dollars budget? It is not. All of these years, the private sector has figured out how to make things work. Okay, so they closed their business in Agania Shopping Center. Well, they only have one business left. They closed their business at Micronesia Mall. Well, they have one business left. We have one company that had three businesses on Guam. They've got one business left. Don't tell me that they didn't close. They downsized because they had to. Thank you very much. I defer the rest of my time to the private sector.
Sidoz Masi, Catherine Castro, I want to make one point. We have three senators that had filed way early on before this hearing. Senator Tony Ada, also Senator Vince Borja, as well as Senator Sherry Calvo. They are in Washington, DC right now, fighting for money for education and other things alongside our congressman. So I was asked to make sure that they were recognized. Like I said, they had travel plans, and they are in DC and will provide a report when they come back to Guam in terms of their progress and their attempts to secure federal dollars. So for the record, I understand, you know, your comments, Ms. Castro. But for the record, I know that they have filed travel plans with the committee. With that, I'll go to Dr. Wen. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to go ahead because I have a full clinic this morning. But it's kind of important for me to be here. I know the rest of my colleagues will speak on the other sector, the service and the community. But for me, I really want to concentrate on the healthcare. You know, private healthcare is very challenging. And I tell you, we in the private, I can speak for my clinic. My, you know, we have about forty-something thousand patients in our service. That's about a third or so of the population of Guam. We've been exist since 2005 and strictly a private. We don't take anything else, any grants, anything like that at all. It's very challenging. And since day one, we have not closed our door one day at all. Through the typhoon, through the pandemic, even some parts of Guam, a lot of clinics closed, we remain open every day. We don't remember we closed any day at all. That's a commitment of a private healthcare to provide the healthcare for the people of Guam. You know, we live with our means. I have lost some staff, no, to the government. We lost some staff to the federal. And I tell my staff, you know, if you want to leave to go to the government side or the federal because higher pay, you can, and we are not mad at you because we cannot afford to give you a raise or cannot afford to give you, you know, the salary that the government side can offer you or the federal side. And that's reality, right? You cannot. And I tell you, I have people on my staff that, we just have our celebration, we have people on ten, fifteen, twenty years that been with us since the beginning. And the reason that they stay with us, not because the pay. We are paid, I tell them, we pay much lower than the government side. We cannot compete with GMH, nor GMC, nor the federal. But they stay because we provide them a great place to work, which we listen to them, and we honor, and we try to promote from the inside. We support our people to go through school in order to advance them. We have from lowest point now, they become one provider who supports the school. And that's private side, and we do that on our own. You know, again, we worked with the pandemic. Even we don't get paid for it, and we still working every day. And I know Guam still owes us a lot of money for the pandemic. We spend a lot of money, several million, take care of people of Guam, and to this day, we haven't paid any. We pay our tax on time every year. Okay? And I know the military buildup is very important for Guam, but we also project our five, ten years from now. But somehow, we need to do something to retain our staff because they're going to take our staff away with the higher salary and higher pay. So we have to plan ahead of time. And, you know, I can speak for the private healthcare, including GMH and GMZ. They will lose their staff to the military side. And every clinical staff, including our nursing staff, that we lose access to care for the private population is going to take a big hit. And if you think that you can have access to care now, it's a problem. We have more access to care before. So what one percent will do for us is for the private side to at least give our clinical staff, our personnel, a small raise. You know, when we raise, we raise them three, four percent, but we cannot raise more than that just because we cannot afford it. You know, we can upgrade our system. We can, you know, do the maintenance we need to be to provide the care for people of Guam. You know, one percent mean a lot to us. You know, right now, from our clinic standpoint of view, for the past twenty years, we have not charged our patient the business privileged tax. That five percent, we absorb that. But at a certain point, in order for us to even try to compete in the next five to ten years, we might have to pass a cost to the consumer, right, to our patient, which we really don't want to do that. But people are already short already, costs are high, and we don't want to do that at all. So we really, when we hear that the government have excess taxes, the revenue, we say, wow, you know, that's really nice. We wish we can retain some of it for our private staff. I'm going to tell you, I mean, our staff, no. We don't give rates every year. Every two to three years, we give them three, four percent. Again, it's the living with our means that we can do. I feel for them. And I wish I could give them more. And that's not for my clinic, it's every private provider in Guam. You know, we will need your help. We will try our best to maintain our service and improve our service for the next, you know, year, two years, three years, five years down the road. But we know it's going to be very tough. And we won't close the door. But, you know, we would like to continue to improve our care for people in Guam if we can, with your help. I think one percent mean a lot for our healthcare system and all my colleagues that provide all different service for people in Guam. I think that the private side is a big part. We have to work with the government, and it has to be, you know, public-private and not just right now, just the public. We cannot keep continuing to do that. But thank you so much for giving me some time to speak on behalf of the healthcare system. I know that other provider might be on the hearing today too, so, but thank you so much.
Sidoz Masi, Dr. Wen, and once again, Senator, Vice Speaker and Vice Chair of this committee, along with Senator Borja and Senator Calvo are watching this proceeding. And they're confirming now that they have meetings with the White House. They have a personal meeting with, an individual meeting with Speaker Johnson. And they also have a meeting with US DOE officials. So they are conducting official business in Washington, DC, those senators. So thank you once again for the opportunity to do that. Now we have our Zoom with Dr. Shea. Can we bring in Dr. Shea, please? Welcome, welcome, Dr. Shea. Okay, Dr. Shea, one moment, please. Maybe you're muted. Once again? Can we get the audio from Dr. Shea, please, audio? Yes, Doc, it sounds like we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, yeah, my name is Dr. Thomas Shea, and I'm a board certified OB-GYN in Guam. I've been here nearly three decades, so I mean, I've made quite a bit of commitment and sacrifice for the women and children of Guam. I'm speaking to represent the Guam's largest healthcare organization, and the Guam Medical Association rises to support Bill 11 dash thirty-eight. Collectively, we support a full rollback of BPT, or it used to be called the GRT. That's how long I've known this tax. It was so regressive that it used to be GRT. But I guess it sounds, I guess to lawmakers, better to call it a BPT. But really, it's a five percent gross right off the top. You know, you turn the light, five percent goes directly to government in Guam. It's a fact that healthcare is central to all. And over the last seven years, I don't really care what Adalup says. You know, Adalup basically lies all the time, okay? They will make up stuff, and they'll say that, well, you know, rolling back GRT by one percent, you're going to lose healthcare, you're going to lose education. Well, look at the last seven years with the GRT, the BPT at five percent. You got the worst years of public education ever. You've got the worst years of healthcare at GMH ever. Joint Commission accreditation was promised by Adalup, and that's failed. You know, campaign promises has failed. GMH was promised by Adalup to be financially stable. They're going to fix the finances. That was exact words. That's failed. We were told that it's going to be a better state of healthcare six years ago, and today it's not. The fact is that with all the taxes that the GovGuam has taken, even with the billions from the federal government, the hospital remains constantly, and public health remains constantly in a state of emergency. And they're always coming back to the legislature begging, begging, begging. But one must not forget the private sector. The private sector does not have the privilege to come into the legislature and begging for money. This GRT was supposed to be only for six months, if I recall, when it went into effect. And we said, okay. And the Guam Chamber of Commerce is correct that that six months, for some reason, GovGuam got so spoiled that they kept it. And, you know, if you look at the history, why healthcare is so important is that, look at COVID. We were affected by COVID. When GovGuam's public health closed their clinics, it was really the private clinics that remained open. And Dr. Nguyen is right. We were the ones who kept our clinics open to relieve the strains of the hospitals and for public health. The private clinics are the small businesses that people tend to forget. And I speak on behalf of all the medical clinics within the Guam Medical Association. And we have over two hundred-something members as well. It's very difficult for us to recruit and retain nurses and staff. But GovGuam takes our money, abuses it, and wastes it. But Gov Guam takes our money, abuses it and wastes it. And so it creates a system, a vacuum within our healthcare community that makes it hard for us to even retain. Many of the clinics right now is have a hard time giving raises to our staff. So even if that 1% can go back to the clinic, I think it will help them to raise that standard of living for the people of Guam, especially for those in healthcare status, for nurses, for medical assistants, for LPNs, for RNs, even for the people who is on the computers, even the receptionists that work in the clinic. The clinic struggles with real costs, just like any other business. So the majority of the health clinic have no tax exemptions. We're not, we're not like SDA, we're not like Total Guam where exemptions are, sky is the limit. If Gov Guam even supported them, but they still refuse to take care of some clinics and they've got the tax exemption. But BAs may, I think instead of Gov Guam taking 5% right off the top each year, I think 4% should be enough. And if you're saying that's not enough, you got to trim the fat because our clinics have to trim our fat because you took an extra 1% so many years ago. So with a small rollback, I think it's not going to resolve the healthcare crisis that this administration has created and failed to fix as promised. But I think it's going to help a little bit. But at the end of the day, I want you to look at the healthcare crisis that we have today. If anything, you know, the healthcare industry, the entire industry, perhaps you have a full exemption of 5%. But BAs may, that may not be possible. So I think going back to 4% will be helpful for me and the clinic. So as GMA, I'll keep it real short. We fully support Bill 11-38. And that's my testimony, really short. Thank you.
Sidoz Maasi, Dr. Shea. And I'm going to ask the committee if they have any specific questions, any of the senators, please send them to the committee and I'll direct them to the doctors. I want to let them go to do their critical care that they do. So for the doctors that have presented today, have a great day and hopefully all your patients stay healthy. I have to ask for one more indulgence, please. There is a member from the private sector that like to testify that has a young infant and so we are going to give some deference to that so she can resume her motherly duties after preparing her testimony. Please come forward, ma'am. Please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Absolutely. Good morning and thank you all very much for the accommodation. I've got Nanny here, right here attached to me right now. So appreciate that. Good morning, my name is Dina Rendin Pangolinan and I am the President with the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce, here representing them today. Thank you Senator Chris Duñez, Chairman, for allowing us to be here and of course to honor all the honorable senators of the 38th Legislative. I really do want to give time to everyone in this room. I recognize it's a very crowded room. So I'll just briefly read through our testimony that our government committee, as well as our board, has put together for your reading and discussion today. The Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce respectfully submits his testimony in response to Bill Number 1138. We do want to acknowledge and appreciate Senator Gumaytao Tao for meeting with us a few months ago to discuss this very important bill. We appreciate that. The Women's Chamber vision is to foster an island economy that is driven and influenced by the equal participation of women in business. We support policies that advance economic empowerment and inclusive growth, especially for small and women-owned enterprises that are truly the backbone of Guam's economy. We support the intent behind this legislation to stimulate economic activity and provide relief to local businesses. However, we feel that the broader fiscal and economic implications of this bill are not clearly understood. As we know, the BBT was raised in 2018 after the passage of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, AKA the Trump tax cuts that we all know about, that resulted in significant drop in tax revenue for Gov Guam. It was intended as a temporary measure to avoid a local budget crisis, although since then revenues have rebounded. Gov Guam has reported a surplus and many stakeholders feel it's time to bring an end to what was supposed to be a temporary tax increase. It is worth noting that the federal tax and spending bill that was passed by the House of Representatives in May of this year is now before the Senate, contains provisions that would extend Trump's aforementioned tax cuts, as well as introduce significant new restrictions on the Medicaid and SNAP programs. It will be important for local lawmakers to understand how these federal tax and spending changes will impact us locally, as we may find ourselves in a similar situation as to what prompted the BBT increase in 2018. According to the recent public statement by the governor, the proposed rollback would result in an estimated 80 million reduction in annual government revenues. Without a clear and transparent plan to offset this loss, we risk compromising essential government services that support economic infrastructure, education, healthcare and public safety services, which our small businesses and families heavily rely on. Additionally, many Guam businesses have contracts with government of Guam and it is not clear if those contracts would be impacted. We respectfully and kindly urge this body to, we have a few statements. One, request a full fiscal impact analysis from DRT and BBMR to quantify the overall impact to annual tax revenues, as well as how the tax burden would shift across different business sizes. We urge and kindly request to explore the adjusting of the existing small business annual revenue threshold under Dave Santos Act, from the current 500,000 to 1 million or any higher amount, to expand the number of small businesses that are benefiting from the 3% BBT rate. Number three, we clearly identify the government services and expenditures that will be reduced to accommodate the projected revenue loss. And lastly, identify other revenue generating opportunities, some of which were discussed earlier, such as closing loopholes that allow off-island businesses benefiting from DoD contracts to bypass incorporating paying BBT. So in conclusion, while we do support the bill's intent to create a more dynamic and resilient business climate, we feel the public and the business community should have some better understanding of what the impacts are, as well as how the government plans to either cut spending or increase revenues to adjust for this significant impact. We truly thank you for the opportunity to read. And that sounds like my time. Sidoz Maasi.
Sidoz Maasi, ma'am. I'm so encouraged by that future voter, already wants to testify.
She's ready.
So unless there's any objection from my colleagues here on the panel, we're going to go ahead and release you as well and accept the testimony of your infant child as well.
Thank you very much. Sidoz Maasi. And thank you very much to the fellow people on the panel. Appreciate it.
So continuing on, Catherine, if you don't want to identify them, I think maybe Senator, you want to kick it off for the private sector Chamber of Commerce presentation as well, and then whatever colleague wants to jump in after that. Senator, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. And for the record, I just came to testify as a taxpayer. I mean, I'm a member of the chamber and member of GTTA, but I'm really, thank you for including me in the business community. I've been there a long time and I've been here as well. So I appreciate the challenges that you face. But if it's okay with the rest of my colleagues, I'll go ahead and just read my testimony and then provide just a couple of comments on what Les Carlson provided. But it'll be less than three hours, so. I timed it, I got it down to like five minutes. Okay, so, so in 2018, our government raised the BBT on all of its taxpayers. What was supposed to be a temporary tax increase is now in its seventh year. Now, due to huge federal spending on Guam's military buildup and despite the terrorism post-COVID downturn, Gov Guam tax revenues are so high that elected officials passed an FY25 $1.1 billion budget, the largest budget ever adopted by this government. Government tax revenues are so high that, I don't know if it was this year's budget, maybe it was last year's budget, paid a 22% pay raise for government employees. As of April this year, Gov Guam reported that general fund revenues are already running 52 million above projected revenues for FY25, an average of 7.3 million per month in higher revenues. At this pace, Gov Guam revenues will be about 85 million more than projected for this year. And I saw from Les's numbers and even the governor, 80 million seems to be the number, plus or minus, yeah? But that's the impact of this 1%. That's what we're talking about. But Gov Guam FY25 revenues will reach the highest level in history, approaching 1.2 billion, creating yet another surplus. Senator Gumaytao's bill is pretty simple. It proposes reducing business taxes from 5% to the previously longstanding 4%. Instead of spending more taxpayer money, Senator Gumaytao wants to return an estimated 85 million to taxpayers so that they can decide how best to spend what was their money to begin with. Despite some relief granted for small businesses, and these small businesses, it's great that they're paying 3%, but I think their gross is a million dollars or less, the bulk of the economy is still paying 5%. When you think about the grocery stores, the insurance companies, the doctors, right, the clinics, the bulk of what everyone purchases here, after withholding taxes, right, is still being taxed at 5%. The higher BBT made inflation even worse. Government BBT revenues have benefited from inflation at the expense of taxpayers. Yet instead of returning tax revenues to taxpayers, some of you have already added or introduced appropriations to spend these excess taxes. Some have proposed lowering exemptions from the higher 5% BBT. But lowering the BBT will provide 1% business income exemptions for all the businesses. You don't have to wrestle with, oh, maybe this one gets an exemption, this one doesn't, right? Large or small. At a time when many businesses have had to close or reduce employee hours or reduce customer services, our government should lower our taxes instead of funding new spending. And another thing occurred to me, even if you pass or when you pass Senator Gumaytao's bill, by the time it takes effect, 80% of this fiscal year is already gone. So the revenue surplus that's already being projected, you get to keep, right? The earliest it'll take effect is what, August, September, fiscal year's over. This is an FY26 revenue impact, which gives you time to deal with it. But the lateness of this, of passing this bill, should have become law, FY25 is going to benefit from the 5% BBT because 87% of the fiscal year will be gone by the time this becomes law. I also wanted to talk about a perception that many of us in the business community feel from some of the elected officials. The private sector is not the bad guy, as some seem to imply. The private sector has been the largest employer of our people for decades, with 65% to 75% of all workers employed in the private sector. Private citizens have invested their money in Guam instead of elsewhere, with the hope that they can provide goods and services, recover their costs, pay their taxes and still have enough profit to pay back their investment in our island. Businesses must collect business privileged taxes from their customers for the government, withhold income taxes from their employees for the government, and if they are fortunate enough to make a profit, pay income taxes on these profits to the government. The government doesn't create economic activity. It only taxes what others create. If all the businesses on Guam closed, how much revenue would Gov Guam generate? With the BBT, our government takes the first 5% of sales paid by customers, whether the business collecting those taxes makes money or not. And Dr. Shea alluded, that first 5% off the top goes to the government. Returning the GRT to 4% is the right thing to do for our people, our economy and for the businesses who employ the most taxpayers and pay the most taxes. The 85 million in tax revenue, there's another myth, the 85 million in tax revenue, if the BBT is lowered, it's not going to leave the economy. It doesn't just fly off to Saipan or America. It's going to stay in the economy. It will recirculate and multiply through our economy, keeping companies open and our largest workforce working. And all these events, when you give the 1% back to businesses, almost every event that they would put that money back in is taxable. If they pay their employees more, more withholding taxes. If they fix their business, construction investment, there's taxes on that. So giving the taxpayers back their money to recirculate in the economy actually will generate revenue for the government, which will reduce this fear that somehow 80 million dollars is the death of Gov Guam. We ask the legislature and the governor to support the taxpayers of Guam by lowering their BBT. Let taxpayers decide how to keep their businesses open, keep their employees employed, or offset higher costs so they can keep prices from rising even more. Opposing Bill 11 means you believe it's more important for taxpayers to pay higher taxes instead of our government to live within its means. Opposing Bill 11 means you think it's more important to increase government spending instead of returning excess tax revenue to taxpayers. Opposing Bill 11 means you can't think of ways to reduce government spending by just 7% from record revenues, while families and businesses have been reducing their spending by more than 7% for years. As a former senator, I completely understand the urge to fund more mandates. But please remember that taxpayers and their families also have unfunded wishes, but must still live within their means. Our government should be no different. Citizens can't raise their income like the government can raise their taxes. Raising taxes increases the unfunded mandates of taxpayers. You have taken care of government workers. Now is the time to provide some relief to all the other taxpayers. And if not now, when tax revenues are at historic heights, deficits have been eliminated, tax refunds are paid on time, which is, congratulations to all of you, Mr. Byrne, Lester, the governor, you've all done a great job. But we are at historic heights, you've paid all the bills, and if you're not going to lower the taxes now, then when are you going to lower the taxes? Opposing Bill 11 means you think the BBT increase should be made permanent. You spell temporary, P-E-R-M-A-N-E-N-T. Even without the 1% BBT revenue, Gov Guam annual revenue will still exceed 1.1 billion in FY26. And with the continued military buildup of Guam and slowly recovering tourism government revenue, tourism, government revenues will continue to exceed 1 billion for many years to come. The $1 billion budget is here to stay. At the next election, how will Bill 11 opponents justify not lowering the people's taxes when they could have? Anecdotally, this is not my second time I've been here asking to lower taxes. Many years ago, Catherine, remember, the chamber, the BBT was at 6% GRT. And the community came out and said, we opposed it. We marched on the legislature, brought petitions, you know, these days we just do the, what is it, org, dot org, right? We marched on and we said, roll it back. And the strongest proponents of keeping the tax high was my dear friend, former Speaker Ben Pangolinan and then Senator Governor Lou Leon Guerrero. But the rest of the body realized that it was time to roll it back and my good friend lost his seat at the next election, the first speaker I recall ever to lose his seat. So the people of Guam are very sensitive to how you tax them. And they're asking you, they trusted you at the last election, they're asking you to trust them. It's time for the elected representatives, all of you, to return the favor and trust the people of Guam with their money. Sidoz Maasi. Oh, a couple things, just on Les. Les talks about the withholding taxes from the buildup are the main reasons taxes are good. And Kat pointed out, yeah, that's from all the jobs created in the construction industry. The largest taxpayer is coming from the buildup. That's why withholding taxes are up. In fact, and then I like this phrase that, you know, I think he said that the BBT is not the culprit. I said, well, if it's not the culprit, then lowering the taxes isn't going to hurt it. But though, I wanted to dispel some myths that I hear out there, even in the private sector, oh, the buildup's going to end. Buildup's not going to end for years. Anderson and Big Navy need maybe 23 billion to rebuild. The Dome is coming, right? We are going to have record revenues for this community in the coming years and it's not going to go away anytime soon. When the Camp Loss is done, 2,000 to 3,000 soldiers, Marines are going to circulate through Guam, more Section 30 money. So the buildup is going to provide all of you, all of us, the ability to use that large export of federal largess that we've always had and use that money to solve problems and lower the BBT. The other thing, so I just wanted to stress that and I appreciate what Mr. Byrne said, yes, the government employees do spend their money in the economy, of course they do. But where do they get their money? They get their money from the private citizens that are paying their taxes. So again, they don't create the wealth, they consume the taxes and provide services, right? That's why we pay our taxes. But it's not like they created the wealth that paid their salary. The wealth was created by private citizens who took money out of their own pocket, employed their friends and neighbors, tried to sell goods and services, pay all of those costs, pay all those taxes and hopefully have some money left over to keep their business, to get their return on investment. That's not a sin when you invest and ask for a return on your investment. That's not a sin when you invest and ask for a return on your investment. That's how it works, right? And that's what's kept America, that's what's kept Guam going. So if you can't lower the BBT now, you're never going to lower it. And at least if you vote against the bill, admit that you never want to lower the BBT. Tell the voters what you think about taxing them and whether they should have lower taxes or higher taxes. Just be fearful of what the voters might tell you at the next election. Thank you.
Si Dus Masi, Senator Simon Sanchez. I'm going to defer Joe to ladies, if you don't mind.
Hafaree, senators. Thank you, Senator Chris Drenias, Chairman of the Committee on Guam Government Finance and Operations. My name is Mary Rhodes, I'm the President of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, and restoration too, by the way. But I'm here to speak on behalf of our members, our directors on our board, writing and verbally expressing our support for Bill Number 11-38, which is relative to restoring the business privilege tax to 4%. Over the past several years, we have seen our island really face unprecedented challenges due to COVID-19, but also followed by typhoon Maywar, with local businesses, especially those tied to tourism, amongst some of the hardest hit. Many businesses in hospitality and service have really been forced to permanently close or temporarily close by drastically scaling back operations due to the slow return of tourism. And even if they haven't closed, you've seen them reduce operating hours at least. We continue, because of these scale back of operations, we continue to see a very slow return of tourism to Guam. That is a challenge we continue to face today. Our tourism arrivals remain 46% behind where we were pre-pandemic. 2024 was at 753,000 arrivals compared to 1.6 million in 2019. Hotel occupancy taxes dropped by 26% this last year with 33 million point 34 versus 45 million in 2019. Tourism once represented actually 60% of our GDP. It does not represent 60% GDP today. Collectively, however, tourism and all of private sector represents 58%. So you're really missing a huge portion of what could be better for Guam. With GRT, tourism alone generated 58.8 million in gross receipts taxes in 2019. Let me say that again, 58.8 million in GRT alone amongst all the other taxes that we pay, that was made in 2019 and given to the government. Today, because of the slow return, tourism has only collected 9.39 million dollars and given that to the government. That is a drop, a deficit of $49 million alone. That's half of your surplus, almost half of your surplus. 49 million is what we've seen drop. Every year, by the way, that's not total from 2019 to today. That is per year, 49 million we're missing in GRT alone amongst all other taxes. That is a deficit of 86%. While reducing taxes is not the only remedy to this, only any savings realized from a reduction in taxes will certainly help all of our businesses meet our financial obligations, help expand operations, really reinvest in our staff but also our products. By reducing BBT, especially in a small community like Guam, where economic opportunities may be limited, yes, we see a huge boom in construction today and all services related to the buildup, but tourism is falling behind. Even any modest tax relief can have a substantial impact. It allows companies to really have more liquidity to pay their loans, retain and pay employees, and we've seen high turnovers, but retain and continue to pay employees, again, invest in their products, but also support the growth of locally owned enterprises that keep profits circulating on Guam, just like GovGuam employees are generating their money back into the community, so are private sector. Lowering business taxes is not about reducing government revenue. It's about enabling long-term growth that ultimately leads to broader and more stable revenue streams for all of Guam. We have seen in total taxes, $414 million brought in, in total, just BBT alone, where we had 308 million in 2019. That was provided by Senator Guma Tautau. There's a difference of 105 extra million dollars there that we've seen in five years' growth, or six years, yeah, five years' growth, because that was 2024. You've seen an increase of 105 million dollars. Of that, we've seen a surplus of a minimum of 60 million the last three years with GovGuam. A surplus, when does a government make extra money? Right? So I know we're catching up with things, but we've seen the surplus be at 60 million, now expecting 85 million this year, but tourism is still way behind. Again, you're missing 49 million a year in tourism alone. We are only contributing 9 million out of that, where we used to give 58 million. GHRA recommends not only lowering the BBT with Bill Number 11-38, but we also hope that you all support Bill 90-38 for the industries that, who have not flourished and really need the help for stimulating economic activity and help rebound growth. Specifically, the tourism and service industries will definitely benefit from the passage of Bill 11-38 by reducing the BBT to 4%, but also small businesses, which is the majority of businesses on Guam, will also gain by lowering BBT to 3% for up to 2 million, which I know Bill 90-38 supports. Lowering taxes enhances cash flow, which we all need. Again, lowering taxes enhances cash flow for businesses, which leads to greater economic activity. Lowering taxes can also help businesses generate additional revenue through increased sales, which by the way, increases overall taxes. You get it through income tax, property tax, corporate tax, hotel occupancy tax, and then BBT, gross receipts tax. Over time, a stronger tourism industry and small business community fuels sustainable development. That reduces our reliance on government assistance programs and helps elevate the overall standard of living. When businesses thrive, communities flourish. When large industries and small communities and small businesses grow together, they form a stronger, more resilient economy. By reforming tax laws, governments can actually fuel inclusive economic growth, which attracts investment and ensures that no sector or no community is left behind. Tourism is a vital economic driver. We generate jobs, support local vendors, and we are the only ones that attract outside revenue. That is what we're missing on Guam, outside revenue with our leisure tourist market. It cannot recover without a strong private sector at its core. From hospitality to transportation to cultural attractions, retail, small businesses are the backbone of tourism. They need investment, they need tax relief, they need marketing support, like with businesses or agencies like GVV, and they need streamlined regulations to rebuild. Collectively, GovGuam and our private sector partners can restore confidence in our local destination and encourage visitors to return to Guam. Revitalizing private sector is not just about economic numbers, it's about restoring faith and ensuring long-term economic stability for our island. Our focus should be on how to once again grow revenues and build sustainability with our largest industry. As we continue to see economic growth in construction and as businesses emerge from disruptions of recent years, public sector and private sector partners, GHRA understands we have to have, we understand it's crucial that we strike a careful balance between supporting high-impact industries like construction and tourism while driving long-term economic development through private sector. Fortunately, our construction industry has been experiencing that exponential growth due to the military buildup, but unfortunately, the tourism industry falls behind. Just to give you an example of all those taxes that I gave earlier, from income tax, corporate tax, even property tax, to BBT and hotel occupancy tax, we used to contribute 238.6 million dollars. Again, 238.6 million dollars in 2019. Today, tourism has only generated 56.8 million in BBT alone. That is per year. So I was saying earlier, you're missing 49 million just on BBT alone. Total in taxes with corporate income tax, BBT, hotel occupancy tax, tourism has fallen behind by 181 million per year. Outside of the short-term recovery efforts led by GVV and private sector partners, we implore the Guam Legislature to really take action and work together for a more cohesive and targeted approach that includes supporting our private sector and tourism economy, to rebuild our industry and revitalize our economy altogether, again, no one left behind. We could be so much better. Reducing BBT could be one of the first steps for the Guam Legislature to truly take action and help lead our recovery efforts with your tourism partners. GHRA would like to thank Senator Guma Tautau for introducing Bill 11-38, and other senators who have introduced BBT bills. We are looking for BBT tax reform as well as others, and we want you to support the private sector. As the leading tourism NGO, GHRA is focused on meeting its mission to advocate just legislation but also work with all of you as our leaders, and we are one of our strongest partners with the government actually, in our tourism industry and for the community of Guam. We are made up of more than 300 members, and we are always available, especially I'm always available, to be your resource here at the Guam Legislature, to work collectively together with you and with our executive branch, to rebuild our tourism industry once and for all, to really completely rebuild our economy. Thank you so much.
Si Dus Masi, Mary. I'm going to go to Joe and then to Monty. What I'm going to do here, folks, I imagine the questions are going to be very similar for the government as well as the private sector. So my intention, when I asked the chamber to put a panel forward, was to get the party started, if you will. So when I finish with Joe and Monty, we'll go to a question and answer for our senators. They will have a five-minute limit. All of your testimony is important to us, but it's important for us to get these first row of questions out of the way. I think, like I said, there'll probably be some duplications with other panels. Appreciate your patience. Joe Roberto, please proceed.
Hafaree, senators, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for everyone's patience today so far, and everyone for being here, because this is such an important bill, and mine is going to hopefully just be very simple, quick, what he said. That's it. I'm just kidding, I wanted to throw in some smiles and laughter, but Simon, you did do a great job as well as everybody else. But I'm with East Island, telling me and my brother own this, and we are just a couple farm boys from Ypen Talavofu. We graduated from GCC with our trades being in automotive and welding. While we started out in the trades, God had other plans for us. Here we are today. What was supposed to be a temporary solution some seven years ago, when the government was in dire need, me, he and I spoke, and we fully support our government. Our government is made up of family and friends, this is who we are, all right? Now surpluses are being realized, yet the promise of it being temporary has yet to be fulfilled. We fully supported the increase when the government was in dire need. Now with surpluses, please fulfill that promise. As a small company for many years, we're always doing what we can to save for rainy days. A very good example is the pandemic. When the government announced, were announced of shutdowns, we made, we took our savings, provided it to our staff and their families, nearly emptied out the account. Why? Because they are extremely important. Five years later, we're still trying to recoup. We're grateful to have the SBA step in and provide assistance, which saved our small company from complete closure. This, I got to tell you, when we made that decision to take out the savings, we took it out, we cashed it, and we said, guys, everyone's off today, go directly to the stores, get food, get drinks, we don't know what's going to happen, but take care of your families, period. So we let them go. As a small company, our benefit packages provide our eligible staff life insurance, monthly profit sharing, retirement plans, medical and dental insurance, annual vacation with pay, recognized holiday with pay, and a birthday with pay. Also, dependent on the length of service, we take care of their cell phone bill, they take home our company vehicles, thereby saving them on insurance costs, fuel and maintenance, and much more. We have such a small staff that every person is needed. We are not able to hire additional staff for the unforeseen events such as sickness, family events, and/or emergencies. What would the rollback do for our small company? Maybe hire another person? Maybe be able to recoup the emergency fund? Maybe increase our inventory levels? Maybe add more employee bonuses? Maybe treat our staff to lunch, every so often, which we do already, and so many more benefits to our staff and their families and so much more. As an owner, in an effort to save thousands per year, my wife, who does in fact work for another private firm, I'm covered under her medical and dental insurance. My small company saves at least 10,000 per year, thanks to her employment at a different company. To increase staff, I'm curious how many people are hired in the government for one person's task? In our small company, when one person is out sick, our operations simply cannot handle the normal workload. To alleviate the pressure, we simply turn away customers to main quality over quantity. As a person who starts in a small organization, they only think of themselves and how much more they can make per hour. As our staff grows, as that person earns more, commits more, they learn to lead, and by leading, you lose the right to think of yourself. To come full circle, they eventually lead the location in hopes to one day start their own, which we've done. We partner up with a very loyal staff member to become an owner. As a small business, we're striving to increase our bond capacity to take on large projects, but it is extremely tough when the government takes so much out of our small company, and in order to provide a proposal, we need to have millions, millions of dollars of insurance and in bond. This is just one reason why many large companies win over smaller ones. At the same time, the large companies do help the smaller ones by hiring them out as subs. In addition to the rollback, a kind request. Increase the Dave Santas Act from 40,000 to 80,000, and increase the L E C S B program, or limited exemption, for certain small businesses from 500K to 2.5 million. Reason for such a request? The dollar of today is definitely not the same dollar of yesterday. Please know, whenever I hear people speak of the rich getting richer, they simply do not understand the sacrifice, the hardships and failures endured by such a journey. They never will understand, till they themselves take the leap of faith God had intended for them to take. We must, we all must believe in ourselves, and our government is simply supposed to help their people, not hinder growth and contributions. Being in business takes so much out of people, the stress, fear, and failure that at times, and sadly, kills them. It is a rough and tough mindset to maintain It is a rough and tough mindset to maintain each and each day, to look at our staff with a golden smile, to show they are well taken care of, and to smile at customers when they give, when they given the best deal possible and our customers continue to ask for more. I used to think rich is about money, when it really isn't. It's about spending time with your family, be able to give back and provide help to those who are really in need, not to those who abuse the system, taking advantage of thousands who make the effort to improve their lives and the lives of their families and others. My mother-in-law, I'm going to get back to that part. As a small business owner, as a small business owner, over the years, we develop and train others to take our position to lead our team, which allows us the flexibility to give back to the community. From being a youth soccer coach for many years, being on board, on boards for a few nonprofit organizations, and simply giving your time for the church and community, it takes a toll, but it's through faith and confidence in others, we do what we can to help. Additionally, every month, we get solicitation letters, calls, messages and requests for contributions. Our small company to date has never said no to any request. We always do what we can to support our company, our community. There is just so many things a small company can do with such savings, and my immediate action is to provide more for our staff, their families and our community, as we've done since we've opened. As farm boys from Yipan Talavofu, we were raised by simple parents who cared so much for their kids and their neighbors. We tried to, we tried to duplicate such blessing. We need our government to help us grow, not to depend on programs that would have capable people believe they don't need to work. Thank you in advance for everyone's time and consideration. Joe Roberto. Now, I'm going to share a little bit of what my mother-in-law, please forgive me, mother-in-law out there. But it's a sad story. She lost her home about three months ago to a fire, and it's completely destroyed. That was three months ago. She's been asking for some help, and these tax dollars are supposed to help. It is our priority, my brother and I, when it comes time to pay taxes, it is a huge priority to pay our taxes because it goes to help our cousins, our family, our friends. So please don't stop taxes. It is a good thing for businesses to pay, but when you're, when a lot of small businesses are struggling, that they are, it truly is, it, let's try to find that balance. It's in the letter about my mother-in-law, and please forgive me for sharing that part. Now, as a quick note, I do pray that our chairman for the Guam Contractors Association is allowed to speak, because I'll share this much, as the immediate past chair, our members, our 88% of them make less than 5 million. 88%. Approximately 12% make over 5 million. And of that 5 billion, there's just maybe one or two, and we're talking about the billion-dollar companies. And when they, when it's said that they're going to make money, good on them, good on those that have worked so hard to make that kind of money. But at the same time, where those large companies are giving back by hiring the contractors that are here, that are local. Our bond capacity for small companies does not apply. Even when the government asks for proposals, it is required to have such a bond capacity, which a lot of small companies don't qualify. So it depends, we depend on larger companies just for that one purpose, and that's bond capacity. You can speak to insurance companies about that. But anyway, I do hope that he, he does get to speak and stick around because he also owns a little, a small firm that I'm pretty sure he's late for work today. But there's my testimony. Thank you very much.
Sides, Maasi, Joe. Everyone will be able to speak amongst the private sector partners. If you want to agree, who else you want to bring up other than sign in, that's okay with me, too. I'm very flexible. But everyone will have a chance. We can go until 1:00. If everyone wants to after that to recess, we can come back. We have the whole day. And if I need to, I'll schedule another day as well. I'll recess this hearing. We are going to hear everyone on this bill. Everyone here is going to be equally as patient with one another, but this bill will be thoroughly vetted and thoroughly heard. So no problem with that, Joe. Mr. Monty McDowell, please proceed.
Thank you, Senator. I'm Monty McDowell. I'm here representing the Guam Association of Realtors. I am the chairman of the Government Affairs Committee. So the good news for Joe and his mother-in-law is that we have a vibrant real estate community. If she needs help, give us a call.
Good morning, senators. We are writing in strong support of Bill 11-38 introduced by Senator Sean Gumatauto, which seeks to reduce Guam's business privilege tax from 5% back to 4%. The legislation is timely, well reasoned, and grounded in economic reality facing every household and enterprise on the island. The increase to 5% in 2018 was meant to be temporary, yet its effects have become permanent burdens, especially for small and mid-sized businesses who must balance higher operating costs with a customer base strained by inflation. Reducing the business privilege tax will provide immediate and broad relief across industries including construction, real estate, hospitality, retail and professional services, improve price competitiveness, especially in our tourism and export sectors, encourage local entrepreneurship and investment by freeing up working capital, help mitigate the impact of rising utilities, gas and grocery costs on working families. With the influx of federal aid stronger than anticipated Section 30 revenues and the eventual resurgence of our tourism industry, the modest rollback is both fiscally responsible and economically catalytic. It is also a matter of fairness. Returning the tax to its longstanding 4% recognizes the sacrifices made by the private sector during the pandemic and affirms the government's commitment to share, shared recovery. We appreciate, we respectfully urge the body to pass Bill 11-38 and ask the administration to join in supporting the measure as a meaningful step toward affordability and growth. Sides, Maasi.
Sides, Maasi, Monty. And so with that, the first panel having been able to present their testimony, I am now going to go to senators in the order they arrived, and of course, first the author of the bill. And so these senators will have five minutes to ask this panel questions, and so I'll begin with you, Senator Gumatauto.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I just want to start by saying that I'm really encouraged by the turnout today, and I want to thank the panel to include former Senator Sanchez. It's always good to have an extra person up here who's, who's been in this seat that can help us to kind of traverse a very complex but very simple policy. I want to also, and this is not meant to be very facetious, but I appreciate Lester's encouragement. I think he made the best argument for the rollback of the business privilege tax today. And again, government doesn't appear to be compromised by taking 1% and giving it right back to taxpayers. So I appreciate his input. I also wanted to ask, or one more comment if I could, on Lester. And he said that he pointed out new investments. Entrepreneurs made those investments, not government. And it's certainly not the result of efficient land use, permitting process, safer roads, reliable public transportation. Again, restoring the BPT to 4% will only grow that very short list that was presented, and I think the chamber will have new members at some point with this. I want to ask the administration, if I can, how many businesses contribute to the reported 94% of GRT payments, recognizing that it was said publicly that 90% of businesses in Guam, those making less than 500,000 annually?
If you don't mind, Senator, I would like to pull up the person who actually did the analysis.
Sure. I'm more than happy to hear from your staff.
That would be Carolyn Rivera.
Thanks, Carolyn, in advance. Sure, I'll be happy to ask it again. How many businesses?
Greetings to everyone. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, ma'am. First off, for the record, can you please state your name and what your title is?
I am Carolyn.
There you go.
I'm Carolyn Rivera. I work with revenue and tax as the Tax Enforcement Administrator.
Okay, thank you so much. Again, my question was, how many businesses contribute to the reported 94% of GRT payments, recognizing that 90% of businesses in Guam, those making less than 500 annually, account for 6% of GRT payments? So how many businesses contribute to making GRT payments? 94%.
If we're discussing just the section of Lexby, the smaller businesses or the entire, which 94%? I just bear with me. I have plethora of worksheet upon worksheet for all of these policies with data. So the 94% that you are referring to is just referring to the 90 million?
Again.
What component?
How many businesses contribute to the reported 94% of GRT payments?
Okay, that would consist of the Lexby grouping. We have a total of, I believe, 3,000. Hold on. If I understand you correctly, it is the Lexby related, which is the gross annual income of 50,000 to the current 500,000 threshold of gross annual income. We counted 3,145 of the total 15,382 businesses. Yeah, so that 90% translates to the smaller businesses, limited exemption for smaller businesses policy, who are required to remit the 3% of the 5%.
So 3,145 businesses pay less than $500,000 annually for GRT?
They, yes, are, well, that.
They gross less than.
If they gross in the, in the most recent tax year or tax period, the year before, and it's by calendar year, yes, if you've made 500,000 or less, you are eligible, or I'm sorry, 50,000 to 500, because this does not apply to the below 50,000. So the, the, okay, Dave Santos goes from up to, not up to, but below 50,000. So if you made 49,999.99 in the prior period, you are eligible to exempt 42% of the 40, first 40,000 in the subsequent period. So not everybody that makes up to 50,000 is exempt from tax. There is that 10,000 that's still taxed at 5%. So that's the Dave Santos. Then you get into the Lexby related, limited exemption for certain small businesses, Lexby related tax reduction of 2% of that 5%, the current 5%. So you have the total 5%. These are generally the, with the gross annual income, and I call it G I, with the gross annual income from the previous period, if it is 500,000 or less and 50, and above 50,000, 50,000 and above to 500, you will be eligible for the 2% reduction of that 5%, the current 5%.
Okay, let me ask, just let me go backwards a bit. How many total, how many businesses are paying, have, have, are, are we tracking on Guam today? How many businesses are total, are in today who are licensed to do business on Guam? You said 15,000. What's the number?
Okay, so for, this was generally for the Lexby exercise, but in the study, I've counted 15,382 total businesses with.
Hold on, slow down, slow down. 50,000?
15.
Oh, 15. One, five. What's the final?
I'm sorry, 15,382 businesses.
382. Of the 15,382, 3,145 businesses pay less than 500,000 annually in grocery states? That's what you're saying today? May?
May, up to the maximum annual.
How about will? Or it does, because I think when we say may, we can't budget on May. Oh, as in May? Okay, sorry. So 3,145 businesses pay less than 500,000 annually?
Their taxes, their above-the-line taxes of 5% was reduced by 2%. They were eligible for that maximum annual limitation of that 500,000.
Okay.
Just give me a second to pull up my summary.
And Marie, why I'm asking this, I'm hoping that for the committee to capture the information so that, we have other BPT measures that are in front of this body, and I've made it clear on two different occasions for this information so that we can add it to the record, and that's why I'm asking the question publicly today, just so you know.
Yes. Would you like me to summarize the gist of the study for Lexby?
I, I, I'm not, if you want to give it to the committee, that's fine, but I'm only looking for the number today.
Okay, so 3,145 reported Lexby.
Okay, so can I also ask, if I can, of Mr. Byrne and maybe even Marie, is that in his testimony, he mentioned that critical needs need to be taken care of. He mentioned GMHA's pharmaceutical fund and the rainy day fund are going to come short. I mean, this is probably the first time this body has heard that those are coming up short, and we're talking about that here. Can you explain to the community why that is the case?
Well, let me try to explain, Senator. The GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund is a direct, is directly influenced by the BPT take. It's, it's a percentage, it's 6.19%. So if you reduce the BPT take, you're also going to reduce the amount that is deposited into the GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund. I think that's what he meant.
Yes, I did, because I think that the health chair has been kind of asking for information, too, in trying to figure out the issues that face our only public hospital. So when we start hearing these funds being short, that we're only telling half of the problem or a quarter of the problem at our public hospital.
Senator, I think he was saying it would be short if you reduced.
Oh, no, I didn't say that. That was in your presentation, so I want to make sure I was.
It would be short if you reduced the BPT.
Sure.
The BPT take.
Okay, as well as the rainy day fund. Now, the rainy day fund is, helps when things are short and operations are not being done, but I can name a couple of different instances, and I think all the committee chairs can. The rainy day fund, are you tapping rainy day fund to pay some of the other operational costs that have not been covered right now?
The rainy day fund is directly proportional to the total revenues, and I think that's what he meant, is if you reduce the total revenues, you're also going to reduce the deposit in the rainy day fund. We haven't used the rainy day fund. We haven't, and, and it's, that's a function of the legislature. It hasn't found the amount, whatever demands necessary to draw upon the rainy day fund.
And why I say that here publicly, Mr. Byrne, is that when we're looking at the executive branch and their budget and how they use their money, again, just like our families, they have to be able to look at what they have, and they need to prioritize what would be the best for their families, and GovGuam is no different. You're given a budget, and again, you talk about impact. Our families are seeing the impact, too, and all taxpayers, so I just wanted to, for the community's sake, to draw that comparison, because I think today, what we heard was, again, a great argument for, for giving back to the taxpayers of this community, money that they. they have put in, that was meant to be temporary, and now we're going down this road of thinking that it's just this endless barrel. And I just got into this branch, but I'm not inexperienced in this government to know that when we have a lot, we should be doing our better job of taking care of our people. And I know I'm out of time over there, so thank you, Mr. Chair. But I am, there's other panels we can ask questions of.
Thank you, Senator Gomorata. You have plenty of time as we proceed. So what I'm going to do, because Mr. Byrne, going to be as flexible as possible, has mentioned that he will be leaving at 11:40. So I'm going to go down the senators as they arrived, and allow them, if they have a question for Mr. Byrne, I'll give them two minutes, and then we'll resume the panel. So, as they signed in, Senator Taidegui, do you have any questions for Mr. Byrne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to everyone. For the sake of time, I'll skip the formalities. The amount of money that you were talking about earlier, or that BBMR was talking about, the BPT, in March of 2024, we were looking at $35 million. I know you don't probably have all the CRR reports in front of you, but what I'm looking at is $35,813 was actually the excess of our projected revenues, projected revenues, that is, in March of 2024. And today, this year, FY25, we're looking at only $8,182,792 for projected, over-projected revenues in March of 2025. Then in April, then in April of 2024, it was $40,371,178. And now, in April of 2025, we're only looking at $8,956,508. Why such a huge dip?
I'm going to give you my best answer to that. There are two parts to the equation. One is what the adopted revenues were, and I think you recall that during the course of the budget discussions last year, there was an increase in revenues, part of which was due to an anticipated increase in BBT receipts. So, when you're comparing that with the actual, it looks like it's less, because more was assumed at the time of the budget.
Has the administration looked into providing any kind of, what we call the realignment, fiscal realignment, considering we're losing federal funding that's no longer available? In some areas, we're going to be falling short. We're already showing that projected revenues are lower than previous years, we're seeing a dip. Has the administration done anything to provide any kind of realignment?
The uncertainty of federal funding is a concern. We really don't have a whole lot of information, even now, as to which programs are going to be continued and which are discontinued, other than an assessment that was made at Public Health, where we were going to lose about $11 million on some programs. Having said that, some of those programs had really run their course anyway. So I think there were about, I think like 24 or 25 employees who were employed by those programs, that currently have been employed by other programs. Were the cuts to get any deeper, it would obviously become more and more difficult to absorb any employees who were no longer funded. But we really don't have enough information at this time. We're constantly trying to find out from government agencies, but, you know, some of the really big programs, like Medicaid and SNAP, we've been assured would not be affected.
Could the rollback, could the rollback harm Guam's credit rating?
The rollback of?
BPT.
BPT. It very possibly could. We're going to have a credit rating meeting at the end of this month, in connection with the refunding of the, of some BPT bonds. We obviously don't want to have our credit rating affected. Our credit rating depends greatly upon our ability to control our finances. External factors affect all states as well as us, so I'm sure the credit rating agencies have brought that in mind. But uncertainty always makes ratings more difficult to achieve.
If the bill were to pass, what areas in the government would you cut first?
That's, you know, that's a matter that really is a matter for the legislature. We would obviously have some suggestions, but I, when I went through that list of programs or program categories, you know, many of them are absolutely essential, and there would therefore be some difficulty, as indeed there was when the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was enacted. We actually reduced $30 million out of a number of programs, but that wasn't easy, and it wouldn't be easy now, especially since we have, you know, many people relying upon these expenditures, especially, as I tried to point out, in the areas of protection of life and property. We've tried to increase and staff up our police force, and in public education, where there's a constant need for money.
In FY25, when the Trump tax law came into play, it was stated by the administration that there would be payless paydays. Is it anticipated the same scenario will happen today if this were to happen?
You know, that scenario is an awful scenario, and there is a picture of me in the newspaper with the, with the previous governor, talking about payless paydays. I would never want to have that happen, and we would obviously do whatever we need to do to prevent that happening. And, you know, the basis of our finances is much more stable, in that we have, I've heard some comments about, well, why do you need to bring in more taxes than you spend? And that's the surplus, and we build a surplus to cushion ourselves from that particular problem.
So you are not claiming payless paydays this time around, if this, if we were to put it back, the BPT, roll it back?
We would obviously do whatever we can to avoid a payless payday. That, to me, is the last resort of any administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know my time is almost up.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui, and yes, I just want to be fair while Mr. Byrne is here. You're not under subpoena, sir, so you're voluntary, so I'm trying to get my colleagues a couple of questions. And Senator Lohan, please proceed, this time, please, just for the Director Byrne, as his time is limited.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Senator Gomorata, and as well as you, Mr. Chair, for hearing this bill and the introduction of this bill, because identical bill was introduced on 37th Guam Legislature, under my authorship, Bill 3-37, CRR, that never saw the light of day. So thank you very much, again, Senator Gomorata, and of course Chairman Duñez. Mr. Burns, when the 22% pay raise was implemented, what was the total dollar amount government-wide?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
When the 22% pay raise was implemented, what was the total amount government-wide?
I think, well, I'm not sure I can answer government-wide, because we're not responsible for every agency, but I believe for the primary government, it was $21 million.
Twenty, I'm sorry?
$21 million.
$21 million? Okay. And that's just for the line agencies, right?
That's for the central government, yes.
That's not counting the autonomous agencies?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, got it, okay. Can you discuss how the BPT impacts the Pharmaceutical Fund? If the BPT is reduced, obviously, the government, we won't have enough medicine for the hospital. So what is the current ceiling of the Governor's Transfer Authority? And correct me if I'm wrong, even if the rollback, even if we roll back 1%, the government's, or the Governor's Transfer Authority still exceeds the 5.1 million shortage? Am I correct for that?
I'm not sure how that would work, frankly. The Governor's Transfer Authority doesn't apply to transfers to autonomous agencies. It only applies, as my understanding, to transfers between line agencies. Now, this is a slightly different situation, because it's an, you know, it's appropriation that's a percentage of a tax receipt. So I'm not sure it would work, but I suspect it wouldn't be susceptible to Governor's Transfer.
Okay. And this is for you, Mr. Burns, as well as, again, also for the panel as well. So if we, if the government is saying that we can't drop 1% without jeopardizing services, I don't think it's fair that we give the executive branch employees 22% raise while the private sector is left behind to fend for itself. We need to find a compromise, a fraction at the time, while we right-size government, implement innovation and technology. I want to ask the panel here, how we can all work together to achieve this?
Well, I heard, if I may just comment on that, I heard Dr. Nguyen saying he gives his employees a 2% or 3% increase every so often. I'm not sure that's a very substantial thing for me to build on, but when we did, when we did get legislative approval to increase government wages by 22%, that had, that represented an increase that hadn't been made for 12 years. So if you were employed 12 years ago at the time, that would have represented about a 1.7% increase for each year.
Yeah, no, and going back to the Pharmaceutical Fund, my understanding, it wasn't, was not in the legislature at the time, but previous governor had bailed the GMH out numerous times. So, I mean, to say that the governor, the current governor does not, it may not, she may not have the chance for authority, again, previous governors have bailed out, previous governors have bailed out GMH numerous times.
Yes, sir, but not, not through the Governor's Transfer.
Okay, so are you saying then that this governor won't have the opportunity to bail out GMH at this point as well?
Well, bailing out is a kind of emotive way of putting it. We are constantly, we're constantly providing provision to GMH so they could pay their bills, but it's not coming through the Governor's Transfer Authority, it's coming partly from legislative appropriations.
In which we have. We have done that numerous times. I know, I had the bill, 20 million, the 30 million that bailed them out, past legislature as well.
But not, not respectfully from Governor's Transfer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, for your courtesy. I know, Senator, you're champing, but I'm just trying to get all the questions for, for Mr. Byrne before he departs. Senator Salas Montanani, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator. Chairman Duñez, I just want clarification, I know this is going to be quick. Mr. Byrne, are you part of the Governor's Fiscal Team? Yes or no? This is also for the public. Yes or no?
Yes.
The President, he was inaugurated in January, and since then, the writing has been on the wall about federal dollars. So have you been aware of these potential federal cuts? Yes or no?
Which specific cuts referring to?
The potential for federal cuts, Trump cuts. Have you been aware? Yes or no? It's a simple question.
Well, I think I answered it...
Yes or no?
I don't think I can answer, yes or no. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Byrne, on April 7th, two months ago, I wrote the Governor regarding the implementation of public law establishing Comrite 21, or the Modernization Right-Sizing Commission of the Government of Guam for the 21st Century. The goal to create efficiency, eliminating redundancies, and implement best practices, reducing manpower where possible, consolidating functions, and modernizing services. Has this process even began? Yes or no?
I'm not aware of your letter, so I speak not.
You're not aware, and yet you are part of the Governor's Fiscal Team?
I'm not aware of your letter, Senator.
Okay, thank you.
Sisus Massey, Senator Montanani. Speaker Blas, you're recognized, for two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, thank you very much. There was, Mr. Carlson had initially reported that there were, while there were only 230 GovGuam employees hired within the last three, four fiscal years, the private sector had about an increase of 8,000. But of the 230 employees, does that also include those employees that were hired in the autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies?
I'm not sure he got his figures, but I don't believe so.
And of the 8,000 private sector employees, what industry experienced the highest growth?
I'm sorry, Senator.
Of the 8,000 private sector employees that were, the increase, what sector represented the highest growth?
I don't have that information, sir.
Would you, is that kind of information found in your CRR?
No.
Okay, well, lastly, you, there is a mention of the CRR, which is consolidated revenue. Is there, is there another report that is available on a regular basis?
We do a quarterly general fund report.
What about the special revenue?
The special revenue report comes out monthly, too.
Okay, so, on the special revenue report, have you been, what has been the trend that you've seen in special revenue reports?
It varies, Senator. I mean, we, we've had, and again, the trend depends upon the revenue assumptions that were made in the budget at the very beginning. We've had issues with the Customs Quarantine Fund. At the moment, we're doing reasonably okay with that, but it's not showing a surplus. The biggest issue, as everybody knows, has been the, the Public Health, the Sin Tax Fund, which has shown a decrease. In the last two months, it's shown a slight uptick in revenues, but unfortunately, the uptick in revenues hasn't compensated for the deficits that we've experienced in the year-to-date.
When have you started experiencing deficits in your special revenue report?
You know, it's very interesting you ask that question, because when the general fund was doing so badly, and when we were talking of payless paydays, the special revenue funds used to do much better than the general fund. The situation has reversed, unfortunately, and I think that's because the, because they're special revenues, and their revenues are only derived from a narrow basis, some of these funds are beginning to suffer. As you know, tourism is also a big input to the special revenue funds. So that's one of the areas, but the assumptions that we make should bear out the expected, expected revenues that we expect to receive in the, in the following year, when we compile the budget.
Along those lines, are the special revenues, will they also be indicators to how the business activity, how business activity is being run? Because you've got licenses and fees attributing to the special revenue?
Yeah, I personally would have thought that the general fund was a better indicator of that, because, because as Mr. Carlson demonstrated, there's a, there's a range of taxes, and the taxes are based upon volumes and profits. So, in my view, the general fund is a better indicator.
So would you, would it be very safe to say that the better the business, the better your special revenue funds would, would be shot?
Well, not necessarily. And, you know, it's a kind of puzzle to me, why, you know, tobacco and alcohol doesn't derive more revenues, because to my, you know, to my casual observation, those, those types of commodities that continue to be consumed. So, I really can't explain, and maybe we have to look at it over a longer period than one year, maybe we have to look at a trend over several years, as to why these special revenue funds are so variable.
And I think that's a very good study, that it should be, because special revenues do, basically, has been my indicator as to how vibrant and how healthy the business community is. And when your special revenues are down, but your withholding taxes are up, that basically means there's not enough business, it's coming from somewhere else, which is basically, I venture to say, came from the military buildup, it came from construction. It didn't come from basically what we see as our organic and our regular business activity.
Yeah, I don't have the details on that, so I really can't respond to that.
Well, my two minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. I really appreciate that. Senator Chalai, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey. Thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you all for your testimony and all of those who are here. Just wanted to know still from Reverend, oh, sorry, Mr. Byrne, I'm sorry. I hold my Reverend tax questions, but, Mr. Byrne, you said in your testimony, thank you for the breakdown you gave us, you also said tax changes are being proposed, federal government, those, do you expect to impact FY '26 revenues?
So which, which tax changes were you referring?
I'm asking you, I don't know, you said there are tax changes being proposed that will also benefit businesses.
Yeah, those are the federal tax changes.
Yes.
Yes.
How do you expect those to impact, do you expect those to impact FY '26?
Well, that's, um, the, the purpose of them is to benefit businesses. Some of those provisions benefit corporations and may reduce corporate taxes because of the benefit that corporations are going to derive. The, the, the bill that's currently going through the House provide, in particular, provides this bonus depreciation, which is a considerable benefit, and that you can write off your capital expenditure in one year. You obviously have to make the capital expenditure to write it off, and that's the uncertainty which we're not sure we can yet resolve.
Are you expecting that for FY '26?
That's, that's what the federal government proposes.
All right, so are you incorporating that in, in like a revised budget or anything?
Well, we're certainly looking at it. Please remember that this has just, just come out from, from the House, and, and we're having to look at those provisions.
Do you have any preliminary numbers?
No, Senator, not yet.
All right, but, so you're expecting reduced revenue for the government because of those?
There's certainly a possibility, yes.
And then when you gave a breakdown of those who are, well, the, the amounts under the limited exemptions, and then we heard how many businesses there are under, how many businesses do you expect are, are going to benefit from this bill? There are 3,000 in the exempt category or in the 52, 500,000 category? How many are there in the 5%, paying 5%?
I must refer to that through Reverend tax.
All right. All right, okay. The budget that you sent down, that the governor sent down for FY '26 was increased from FY ' '25 for sure, actuals, and the revenue projections much higher. Do, and then now you're, we heard this morning about the 16.3 million to add on every year for Simon Sanchez. Do you, um, I'm sorry, but can you remind me the increase from FY '25 actuals to FY ' '26 proposed request?
I think it was like, and this, you're talking about the executive budget?
Yes.
Which was submitted in January?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was something like, um...
I'll help you. It's between 42 to 44.
30 million?
42 to 44.
Yeah, 30 million.
Increase, 40 million. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Sides, Mr. Montanani. Senator Chalai. Senator Parkinson, and we are also welcoming Senator Perez.
Thank you. The fiscal note shows the BPT revenue at 409.8 million in fiscal 2026. If Bill 11-38 passes, collections fall by roughly 81 to 82 million a year. How will the budget make up this graph, and what programs or services would be most impacted by a 76.9 revenue, 76.9 million revenue shortfall?
As I said, Senator, that's, that's, you know, the, the budget is the legislature's budget. We would certainly have some suggestions. 76 million is certainly a shock, especially when it happens all, all at once. So it obviously will impact some welfare programs. We would probably be challenged to, um, reach the employment goals that we set for the law enforcement agencies, and for two reasons, I guess. One is the simple dollars that are available, but it's challenging enough, and I know the private sector has its challenges employing people, but it's challenging enough to employ the right people in the public sector without, in the, even in the absence of fiscal uncertainty. With fiscal uncertainty, I think employees are going to think more than twice about government employment.
Defense contractors often receive GSA or DOE exemptions. The OPA audit found millions in unpaid BPT from military contracts. Given these enforcement issues, would it make sense to first shore up tax compliance before cutting rates? Can BBMR quantify how much additional revenue might be realistically collected if enforcement approved?
Respectfully, I would like DRT to respond to that.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were going to finish with Director Byrne first.
Senator, please save that question for your additional minutes that I'm going to provide to you.
I apologize, sir. I forgot for a second.
Thank you.
Um, the Guam Pharmaceutical Fund helps purchase essential medicine. With a $5 million cut, roughly 20% of its funding, will GMHA need to reduce drug formulary or patient services? What contingencies exist if the fund is underspent?
GMHA has to respond to the patient. You know, whatever the patient needs, the patient needs to get. Clearly, challenged, it's challenged now, let alone with a potential reduction in the pharmaceutical fund. So it would have to certainly assess whether it continues to offer the range of services that it does now, but it still has to respond to emergent issues, no matter what, when a patient presents, and it, that a reduction in revenues could be more than concerning.
You had mentioned that this reduction in revenues would, like, if you had suggestions, would primarily hit public safety and public services. Many departments rely indirectly on BPT revenues. If up to 82 million is cut, which critical services could face reduction in terms of services? What, like, what, where are you thinking that would land if this, these cuts were to go through?
Well, it could land anywhere. No one wants to cut a critical service. I mean, by its very nature, a critical service is critical, but your, your view and the administration's view of the priority of expenditures would determine, you know, do you have, is, is it safe to have, say, 15 fewer policemen on patrol or 20 fewer customs agents at the port? It, it's a danger, and, and, you know, the legislature and the administration would have to assess that danger.
All right, thank you very much, sir. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez, you're recognized for DOA.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good, good morning to everyone. So, Mr. Director Byrne, you know, in looking at the very first figure that you provided, $11 billion of gross receipts. Has that number changed throughout the years?
11 billion, yeah.
So has, how has it been for the past, let's say, three, five years?
I'm sure it's increased. I don't have the previous numbers, but, but you can see from, from the tax receipts having increased that the gross receipts must also have increased.
Okay, yeah, maybe I have questions for DRT, but I'll hold for, hold for that. In regards to tax credits, so in number six, tax abatements are reported at 12 million. Does that include all the tax credits for all the bills that we passed in the past couple of years? I mean, is that include?
This is based on fiscal 23 numbers, so this, this was what was reported in the, in the financial statements.
And so abatements include, can you just define what that, what covers? What does that cover?
Well, the biggest amount of it, I think, like 80% of it was property taxes. The remainder was, was BPT.
Okay, and that's for QC's or is that for other things?
That's generally QC's, yes.
Okay. And then in regards to the federal tax cuts coming down the pipe, in regards to FEMA, so FEMA is one of, another one of those agencies where they're going to, I guess they're trying to look at cutting even further? You know, what, what is the impact to us here in regards to that? Have we prepared for that?
My understanding of the intention of the federal administration is to transfer FEMA responsibilities from FEMA to the states, and by the states, I think they also mean the territories. We, we haven't had a whole lot of information as to exactly what they, they do expect. Unfortunately, very often, you will make a connection with a federal agency, including at Homeland, and find out that, that, that connection has decided to take early retirement or some, or in some other way has been removed from their position. And that happened, unfortunately, with, with our inquiries into FEMA and our, and our audit that we were trying to do of Homeland. So, again, not much information yet from the federal government as to exactly how we're going to be impacted. I'm sure we will, but, and, but it doesn't mean the same funding won't be there, the response, it may just mean a transfer of responsibilities.
Okay. All right. The other thing is, what is the balance in the rainy day fund?
58 million.
How much?
58 million.
Okay, and then as far as, do you have any way of monitoring multiplier effect in the economy?
I'm not an economist, so what, but what, what question can I try and answer?
I guess, yeah, I guess how does the, I guess there was a testimony provided that there is a possibility for multiplier effect.
With relate, with related to the money that's been put aside, you know, the, I think I've answered this question before. The Government Finance Officers Association basically wants all of their constituent governments to have roughly six months' worth of expenditure sitting in, in a fund, not necessarily a rainy day fund, but in some kind of fund to even out the issues, you know, because cash flows don't, just like business, cash flows don't occur evenly, they occur jaggedly, and a rainy day fund by its very definition is there for a day that none of us can actually forecast. So fiscal responsibility, you know, we're not there yet. We're getting, you know, we're certainly making progress towards the fiscal stability goal that the GFOA has indicated, but frankly, we've got a long way to go yet, because that, that would mean, you know, we, we spend on the general fund about, as you saw, about 900 million a year, so six months would be about 450 million.
All right, thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sides, Mr. Montanani, and before I let you go, Ed, so with the 58, 59 million dollar balance, as the rainy day fund is a formulary, perhaps within this budget year, depending on what the adopted revenues are and the formula for the rainy day fund, I believe we may have, maybe we reach by law what we're supposed to have in the rainy day fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir. You have, there has to be a super majority.
So for the listening public, should that maintain, and for this, for the panel and those that are here, should that maintain that level in subsequent fiscal years? We will no longer have to contribute as long as we hold that fund balance. I just wanted that for information. I'm correct with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I called you Senator earlier, because I wanted you to chair this meeting. Just kidding. Enjoy your day and have a great lunch.
Thank you. I resign.
You resign? Have a nice day, Ed. So we're going to continue, folks, everybody's good here, we're going to go to one, and I'm going to let this panel finish up with three minutes now to the panel, and then we'll go to the next as they've signed in. Senator Gomitato, three minutes for the balance of the panel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and let me start with Catherine Castro, if I can. From the Chamber of Commerce's point of view, in talking with many of your members, when they heard about this Bill 11, I know that this is something that has been in the works for a long time. What has been the general feeling of the membership? I know that you have your written testimony, but I know you're very pointed at the very beginning, but what's the general consensus of the, of the membership today about this bill?
They were very pleased. They wanted to, you know, several members, even throughout the weekend, this past weekend that I've, I've talked to, small businesses that are not even members of the chamber have come up to me and said, "Thank you very much for pushing this out. We really," I mean, whenever I have to pay a BPT check, it hurts me. I would love to be able to give the money instead of paying revenue and taxation, I'd rather give it to my staff who really deserve it. So those are the types of responses and, 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 yeah, from the business community that I have received personally.
And what about your conversations with your friends and family in GovGuam? What do they, what do they think of Bill 11-38?
Well, you know, there is some that really, you know, you know, some we don't even talk about, but others, you know, they're saying, "You know what? We understand." You know, I'm a, I, I go to the stores, I go to restaurants, and I understand that, you know, I don't want to pay those, you know, inflated fees, and I would love to be able to see some kind of relief, or I would love to be able to see my favorite restaurant, you know, have a little bit of a facelift. I would love to be able to go into a, a facility and have them, you know, have more people on staff to help me when I'm looking for something. So those are the types of feedback that we're getting also at the chamber.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Mary, if I can ask you the same question. Outside of what you testified today, what has been some of the general thoughts on, on Bill 11 to, to your members of the GHRA?
I, I think the sentiment is generally that everybody has been struggling. I think those are all known throughout the community. As, in as much as everybody thinks everybody's doing well because of the buildup, you know, you can't really make up our leisure market. That's just the bottom line. We have to really focus on tourism. We cannot replace 181 million dollars. How are we going to get that additional revenue, right, in tax to the government? But considering that we've seen surpluses year after year after year and still struggling, I think that we really have to face the music in the fact that not everything is good on Guam, but we could be so much better, we wouldn't even be sitting at this table if the private sector really got a boost to generate more income for everybody. Really, as an economy, we should be really concerned that tourism is failing overall. It affects every sector, government, it affects every subsector within private sector, because when tourism hasn't rebounded, you really see it in every other industry. You'll see employment down in all other areas or even our inability to pay, like Dr. Wen said. We have to be competitive with GovGuam and with the federal partners, but we need to generate more sales in order to become competitive. The market demands all of that, and we aren't able to be competitive because we haven't had that increase in revenue. So it hasn't been right-sized within private sector in a long time. So as much as we always ask for government to right-size, we haven't been, we have been right-sizing for years, and I think we, we've all stressed that, right? And, and so, you know, I really take to heart what Joe Roberto said, past chairman for Guam Contractors, only a small percentage really make up the large businesses, and that can be said even within tourism. You really have a lot... Um, you really have a lot of, uh, businesses that are related to this, uh, industry. It includes, you know, retail, optional tours, restaurants, and, and a lot of those businesses have truly been struggling. Um, again, I'd like to point out, I mean, just the fact that, um, you know, with RevTax saying that three thousand one hundred and forty-five businesses really fall under the five hundred thousand mark, that remains twelve thousand above five hundred thousand. If everybody received that one percent savings, it is really only the start of our discussion of what else can we do for our economy? Because if the whole economy, especially tourism, is really focused on, and you take that, that eighty million that would have been saved, and you regenerate that back into our private sector market, it will help boost sales overall, so that you can make up. Um, just to give you some numbers of that breakdown that I gave earlier in total tax revenue, so today we're at about fifty-seven million dollars in giving tax revenue from tourism, where we're short a hundred, it used to be two hundred and thirty-eight million. So personal income has gone down from two thousand nineteen to current, from eleven point seven million alone in just personal income to three point nine million. That's how much of a job loss we've seen in paying income tax. So eleven point seven million down to three point nine million. Corporate tax has gone round from sixteen point six million down to two point two million. And this is, uh, generated from the Tourism Economic Survey from GBB. The latest that we have is actually twenty twenty-two for, from twenty twenty-one, and I really hope GBB continues to bring back research so we can get more data, or GHRA and GBB can work with DRT to get the most recent numbers, but these are the recent numbers that we have. But I can tell you now, it's probably gonna be the same, it remains flat, because I've looked at the, um, reports from the government, uh, on, uh, the front offices report on their budget, as well as, um, our tourism recovery reports, and they're all reporting about the same, we've remained flat, if not decreased, from twenty twenty-two since post-COVID. Um, so income tax, again, eleven point seven, down to three point nine, corporate tax, sixteen point six, down to two point two, indirect business, other taxes, twenty-one point eight to six point five, social insurance, seventy-two point eight, down to twenty-four point three, hotel occupancy tax, forty-five point one to twelve point one, but, twelve point nine, but I know it's increased, especially because we have been able to maintain with the, um, military. Uh, gross receipts tax, fifty-eight point eight, again, down to six point seven, but we've seen that increase to nine point three nine currently. And special revenues, you talk about special revenue tax, eleven point eight, down to four hundred thousand. So again, it's three hundred and eighty, three hundred and thirty-eight million in total, down to fifty-six point eight. I wanted to break it down to share with all of you that there are so many tax, um, tiers of this taxing, taxation that takes place within the tourism industry, that you're not really missing the mark only on BPT, you're missing the mark on a lot of other areas. And if we refocus our efforts to not just about a one percent BPT savings, but re, really truly realign priorities and reinvest back in tourism, we all win. And our tourism industry truly needs it, because the buildup has a certain infinite amount of time, we know it's about eight more years, and it's gonna take truly three years for us to recover from tourism, and I know we've been on this track, but we've been on the same track, in fact, we've digressed from last year. So we need to really realign focus and put all our energies into GBB and all of its private sector partners to give them a boost, to really refocus those energies, because we can all go up, including taxes. And so you have to consider in several years where all those extra monies that you've gotten into the general fund, that's gonna start right-sizing itself as those businesses are no longer needed for construction, and they're gonna start to get back to where they normally are when they're not in a peak period, where tourism will need to make up that difference for Gov Guam.
And Mary, I think that's gonna, that conversation's gonna come again in the very, very near future as we kind of pivot, um, to our tourism side, but I, very briefly, from your, from your perch, what, what are Gov Guam employees and their, and their like, what are they saying about Bill 11-38 from, in your conversations with them?
Gov Guam employees?
Because I know you guys engage them all across the Tuamon Row.
I mean, Gov Guam employees, I think, obviously, they provide services, but one of the challenges that I think, as much as Gov Guam has received an increase over the years with their twenty-two percent, we haven't seen services increase. So we still have legs, uh, huge delays, right? So from permitting processes to licenses to inspections, that's, those are all delayed. They were supposed to improve, uh, so even with more money into the government and more money into the coppers to pay employees better and more, for example, Guam EPA has one inspector for the entire island, not just necessarily one industry. So you had huge delays, and so you would think that increases in government, you wouldn't get improved services, and we just, there are, have been challenges there, but we try to work with the government agencies to ensure that, um, you know, whether it's public health to EPA, uh, to OSHA, to, uh, Public Works, that those services are, we're still working with them to get services rendered, but we've seen huge delays regardless of rights, uh, you know, making Gov Guam whole.
Okay, thank you so much, Mary, I only have a couple more minutes, but let me go and ask Simon and, and Joe, but the, Si, from your, from your perch, I'll ask the, because you engage our water and power, um, folks, I know you're in a different capacity today, when you talk about Bill 11-38 and its impact, what do Gov Guam folks think about what they see with this bill?
Well, first off, for the record, uh, the utilities did not adopt the twenty-two percent pay increase, we do ours, we do a wage survey, it averages more like two or three percent a year, uh, and it's paid out of the base rate, and the base rate has not increased since twenty thirteen. So there's a great example of living within your means, finding savings, and we have shared some of those savings with our employees, but not to the extent of raising their pay that much that quickly. We do it gradually over time, but we have not had to raise the base rate that pays for salaries since twenty thirteen. The, we, we appreciate that, so, I mean, so if your question is, you know, what, what am I hearing at, at the utilities, I mean, uh, everyone wants to see their power bill goes down, which is happening, right? Everyone wants to see groceries, uh, groceries go down, everyone wants to see the cost of living go down, and the BBT is a big part of the cost of living, because it's right off the top, it's before the business even touches any revenue. The first revenues go to the government. So every marginal contribution the governor, the government can make to lowering taxes, which are assessed on customers, let's not fool ourselves, customers pay taxes, not businesses, we collect taxes on behalf of the government as required by law, right? So, uh, I, it's never bad to lower taxes, I mean, I, I hear sometimes, "Wow, the Trump tax cut," you know who benefited from the Trump tax cut? Everybody in this room, your income tax will lower, right? And did Gov Guam survive the tax, uh, the Trump tax cuts from seven years ago? Absolutely, and we did it the right way, the economy grew because of the buildup. I'm with Mary that in three to five years, tourism will inch its way back, and that will join the buildup in providing funding for this government. But even right now, even with the twenty-two percent pay increase, revenues for FY twenty-five are going to be eighty, they're trending eighty-four million dollars ahead of projections. I chuckled when I heard that, uh, we, we have continually under-projected government revenues, which means we've also under-projected what taxpayers are paying, right? And, and, you know, it's, it's like, well, who do we exist for? We, we exist to serve the public, the taxpayer, the taxpayer doesn't exist to serve the government. The taxpayer creates the wealth that the government is able to get a piece of for public safety and all that. The one point one billion, you funded more police, you funded more fire, you funded a twenty-two, and you carried forward a twenty-two percent pay adjustment. If you do that again next year, everybody you funded this year will still be on payroll, including the twenty-two percent, a pay, pay adjustment. So we're asking, can you help the taxpayers now? They've kept their commitment, and they are really struggling, and anyone, God bless Lester, he's a dear friend, but you, you throw those numbers up there about businesses, if you are actually out there in the business community, like Joe and Mary and me, right, and hearing what's going on with small businesses and watching, uh, longtime customers saying, "I, I can't afford your services anymore," or hours, and then that shortens the hours I pay my people, because I'm losing customers. It's not good in our economy. It's good if you're a military contractor, and the government's getting benefits from that, but from the rest of the economy, and, uh, I think, Mr. Rivera, I don't know whether it's, uh, I heard three thousand businesses out of either thirteen or fifteen, but whatever it is, you know, the bulk of the economy, eighty percent, is still paying the higher GRT. Can't, can't we, can the government help us, the taxpayer, and give us just that little piece back? It's the difference between some companies staying open and some companies closing. And that money will trickle through the economy, the chamber used to talk about three to four time multiplier effect, so you put eighty million back into the economy, that's a quarter of a billion dollars that will multiply through the economy, the, the money doesn't disappear, it's already in the economy, it's coming from citizens. So when, and when that multiplier effects multiplies that money, the government gets to tax that too. They get the tax on the multiple, the gross revenue of the multiplier effect, they get the tax on improvements to somebody's business, they get the, their cut from increasing pay, and if, if businesses can somehow squeeze out a price reduction, then everybody benefits. Everyone benefits, right, from lowering the BBT, and that's why you should pass it.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Joe, can I ask you, uh, for, I know you're the former chair, but we, the, the members of the GCA, what's their take, I mean, I know you have your prepared statement, and we'll hear from them too, but just generally speaking, what's their feeling about Bill 11-38?
Generally, it, it's a, it's a beautiful thing, it's a great thing, if it would allow for them to do other things such as inventory levels that I spoke about, the shipping costs that it takes to bring in these widgets, it would allow them to increase that, whereas customers that are needing some services now, or products and services, they have to wait six to eight weeks because they cannot afford to increase inventory levels. Uh, equipment, the, uh, the equipment that they're having to do is spend more on rentals, uh, and that, that, there's just, there's so many different things that, uh, so many different benefits that will occur because of lowering taxes. And I, I, I believe the one hundred percent majority of it is about labor, labor force to, to better the lives of their employees. That, I mean, resounding effect of, of what any savings will do, and, I mean, for, for us, I've been, just for me as a small company, that's, I know how it feels, I, I feel that we give it all back, we, we, I mean, when I heard fifty-eight million dollars in a rainy day fund, wow, I mean, uh, it's been raining on our small business since ever since, you know, and I, I, gosh, I, I, can I get some of that? It's really, I mean, how do you, uh, what's the meaning of budget, but how, how do you find that when every single day is a, is a test of your survival? And, but going back to the, the GCA's consent, it, it would be great, it would be a beautiful thing, it, it, there, there's no resistance to that, it, I think it, it would just benefit everyone even more, and it, everyone keeps saying basically the same thing, and I will say this, uh, to help the government, I mean, we've, I've been in meetings with, with GIPA, the, those guys, we're, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars that are just choked up because the permit process cannot go through because of their lack of human resource just to do certain things, and they need help. NAFAC Pacific is trying to help, NAFAC Marianas has tried, Joint Region, and I've been in, in some meetings, it's like, wow, these guys, they need help, but then at the same time, it's creating an, another layer of bureaucracy where they also, that the, the help is being criticized, and it, it's like, what, what's going on? So without mentioning any names, I, please, I, they, there's a couple companies that brought in and invested millions of dollars that went, I mean, in the trash for having to send back hundreds of people that they already paid for in advance, uh, for the H2s to be here, but because of the permit process, it was supposed to only have taken thirty days, according to DPW, thirty to sixty, up to ninety days at the most, so they projected out six months, it went way past six months. They sent everybody back home, they paid for their stay, they paid for transportation, they paid for meals, and it was a huge and massive loss. So these are some of the things that the private sector, some of the large companies are having to deal with, and it, it's gonna be a tough question now. There are certain things that are, the, the, with the military and the construction, it's already being said and it's already being known that it's gonna go past twenty thirty. And because of the slowdown, the, the Secretary of the Navy that has come to Guam, and there are some big leaders coming to Guam, it's a whole nother level of meetings that you guys are a part of, that maybe you should ask, they, they need, GIPA needs serious help, and Michelle, she's, she's been with us, and we're doing all that we've can, we, uh, the NAFAC Pacific and NAFAC Marianas has tried to create an MOA, we've tried to create an MOA, but then it, then it becomes legal. We're, we're trying to do what we can to help move things along, because the imminent danger is real. I mean, all of this tax savings, all of this, some of the meetings, oh, hey, there was already a test rocket flown over Guam, it, I think we all know that, because when it comes time to push the shove, none of this makes any sense at all, because there's another issue, if I just use that word, out there, that is very real, that is beyond all of us, and it's beyond our control. So where the, relative to the BPT, I tell you what, if you want to say about national defense, lowering the BPT would probably help, uh, increase that security, it would increase our protection, it would increase, uh, manpower, it would increase opportunity.
Thank you, Joe.
I hope Matt will stay and say this afternoon.
All right, thank you so much, Joe. Uh, Mr. Chair, that's all I have, thank you so much.
Sure, Catherine, you'd like to be recognized?
I'm terribly sorry, and I know that the panel is waiting and they want to make their questions, but I'm very, very concerned about all of the small businesses that are here, who have been waiting for hours to make their testimony. Would the panel, would the legislators, um, be able to hear them before one o'clock?
Catherine, we'll go, uh, you know, in terms of what, what the, um, you know, uh, what the will of, of the individuals is, like I said, I'm planning to recess, uh, for lunch, and we can continue, uh, all the rest of the day, I've budgeted the entire day, uh, for this, so, you know, it's really, it's important for the panel to be able to ask questions, or the senators, but if that's, you know, the will of the body, I will move on to the next panel, so, now take a five-minute recess.
So now take a five-minute recess.